Hey, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting, this 21st day of June 2022. I want to thank you all for being here. Just have a little something to read, if I might, before we begin. So, the city of Fort Lauderdale will continue to host its meetings in person. Any additional information that you may seek to view our meeting, you can do it online at www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings, plural. I'll repeat that. That's www.fortlauderdale.gov/citycommissionmeetings. And to help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, or profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Number two, if you wish to speak on a specific agenda item, please sign up in the City Hall lobby. A member of the City Clerk's office staff will be there to assist you. So, having said that, we'll now move on to our afternoon agenda, our conference meeting agenda. For those of you who are here for the first time, a conference meeting is a discussion opportunity for the City Commission and the community to openly discuss various issues. The City Commission does not vote on anything during these conference meetings. We can seek consensus and a sense of where the commission's mind is going, but with regard to actual votes, those only take place in the evening meeting, which begins at 6 o'clock tonight. So, I have a few preliminary matters to discuss. First of all, we have communications from the city. Let's see, our first one is from the Historic Preservation Board, and this is a communication sent by the Historic Preservation Board to the City Commission, requiring, I'm not quite sure what additional notice means. Is someone here from the Historic Preservation Board? Trish, would you please mind stepping up and telling us exactly what the request is about?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Tricia Logan, Urban Design and Planning. This is a request from the Historic Preservation Board just to require a couple of additional notices to be sent before the Historic Preservation Board meeting. So, to have an additional mail notice sent to the registered agent that's listed for a property. This would only be applicable if the property is an entity that would have a registered agent and not just the property owner. And then they would also want to have a signed notice posted in advance of the Historic Preservation Board meeting, just alerting the public that it's being considered for historic designation.
Trish, would that be just for commercial or commercial and residential with the sign?
For any property that's being considered for historic designation.
And currently, we do what for signage?
For the Historic Preservation Board, we don't provide a signed notice, but in advance of the City Commission meeting, we do provide a signed notice for any historic designation application.
Right, but just for the commission level?
Just for the commission level.
Okay, because what was confusing about the communication was it didn't mention what you just said about the registered agent. It just said to include a signed notice and an additional mail notice. Oh, sent to the registered agent. So, we don't do that now. We just do the owner.
Correct. We only notice the property owner through certified mail in advance of the hearing, and then it's also posted in the newspaper.
Okay, and is this all just as a result of, I read the minutes in the backup, is this all just as a result of the Castro convertible building in terms of coming forward with an application?
It was a conversation that was initiated because of the Castro convertibles' application for designation.
Okay, but, okay, it makes sense. I'm okay with that, Mayor. Thanks.
I think it's a good idea to put up a signed notice because it allows people in the community to know that the issue is coming up, and if there is a hearing that they are made aware of. Do we give the 350-foot, those property owners within 350 feet, do we give them notice of any hearing that's going to take place with regard to historic designation?
For historic designation, no. For other application types, we do.
So, I think the enhanced notice makes a lot of sense. Anyone else on the commission have any opinions on this?
I think it's good. Yeah, makes sense to me.
I think so. The enhanced notice requirements make a lot of sense. So, Mr. City Attorney, at some point, can we craft an amendment to our existing ordinance to allow for enhanced notice?
We'll get with staff and get something together for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you.
Okay, CF1, Quarterly Investment Report, period ending March 31st. Have we made any money?
No.
You may sit down. You may sit down now, Susan.
No.
Susan Grant, Finance Director, and thank you for letting me be here and presenting the investment report as of March 2022. The city's investment portfolio, our cash portfolio, is in fixed income securities, and as you know, again, with the rising interest rates, the market values of those have been negative. However, they are favorable to the benchmark, so that's positive news. And the other positive news is we recently got our And the other positive news is we recently got our May report, and a lot of the new buys that we're making into the portfolio are yields in excess of what we've seen in many, many years, some of them in the 4% range. So that's good news. The other thing that we watch, although we don't manage those portfolios, are the pension funds, and those are invested in both stocks and bonds and other securities. So those are also experiencing negative yields. It's a very unique part of the market right now because typically if bonds are up, stocks are down, and vice versa. Right now, they're all down. But we're keeping a close eye on those because those do impact future contributions that the city has to make. I said it is a unique market, and we have our investment advisors from PFM, Kyle Jones and Richard Pengelly, and they were just going to give a brief market update.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, please give us a brief market update.
Thank you, thank you. And again, I'm Kyle Jones. I head up our Portfolio Strategies Group, and I will emphasize that word "brief," so if there are any questions, please feel free. I'm more than happy to entertain. Just a couple of highlights. Susan talked about the increase in yields largely related to the fact that the Fed has been acting aggressively to fight these 40-year-high inflationary numbers that we've been seeing. And in doing so, they've started a very aggressive rate hiking path. They've already increased rates 150 basis points, so 1.5% so far here this year, and they've signaled to the markets that they plan to continue to act with these aggressive rate hikes. This rate hike period is not like the last normalization period. During that period, we saw rates continue to gravitate higher over the course of several years, largely because inflation was very, very contained during that period. This is a 2015 to 2018 period. Unlike that time, since the Fed has been so transparent to the market with their intentions, we've really seen those yields gravitate higher in anticipation of rate hikes that we think we'll see from the Fed here over the next couple of years. With that, the critical mass of that increase, and in turn, that market value depreciation that Susan alluded to, has already occurred. The pain has already been felt is the viewpoint, and so we are focusing on the positive element. What does this mean for future income potential? What does this mean for future returns? And so the idea of having these higher, far more advantageous rates than we were seeing or even anticipating this time just a year ago, we view those as positive outlooks, if you will, as far as the income potential in the portfolio going forward, to the point that even if rates do continue to grind modestly higher here over the next couple of years, that that increased income that you receive in the portfolio from these higher-yielding securities helps to act as a buffer to mitigate some of that market value depreciation that just naturally occurs as rates gravitate higher. So while we can look at first quarter, and yes, you see some of the worst bond performance that you've seen in history, it's all over the media, and you can't ignore that reality. When we look at the future income potential, again, we think that it's somewhat advantageous, and we're optimistic about what that means, about bringing income back to the city's coffers here over the next several years. So I promise to be brief. I'll stop there and see if there's any questions, or if there's anything that I didn't touch on that you wanted me to. Perfect.
Okay, any questions? There being none, thank you so much, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Business One regarding the Los Olas Mobility Plan Financial Methodology Study. First of all, I want to say thanks to city staff for continuing with this discussion regarding the Los Olas Mobility Plan. I know a lot of time has been spent over the last several years with stakeholders and our neighbors, as well as two members of our commission who continue to participate in this. So Mr. Rogers, do you want to give us your update?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation and Mobility. So today, we're here to give you an update on Los Olas Mobility Plan, really three kind of takeaways, a refresher of the plan, where we're at right now, some of the initiatives that we're working on, and then we procured the services of STAN Tech to do a financial methodology study, to really understand different funding mechanisms that the city could implement to make this $120 million, $160 million project advance. So I think the first thing I need to do is take a step back, and again, to your point, Mayor, rewind. This has been a project that's been in the works for multiple years. As you alluded to, both Vice Mayor Sorensen and Commissioner Glasson led a working group that met for over a year with the Cordino Group to kind of make the vision understood, and that was memorialized last June in a master plan. That master plan had two corridors in it. It had an eastern corridor and a western corridor. And the reason for that is that when we were coming back to vote, one part of the segment or one part of the plan was ready to advance, and we weren't sure if the other one was going to gain consensus to advance or not. So we bifurcated those before the summer recess last year. That way, if one was ready to advance, we could move forward with it while the other could be finalized. Last June, both of those were advanced with formal approval from the commission. But what that means is that we've got two corridors, two plans, that outline different needs. The western corridor, which comprises the downtown and shops area, Andrews to 12th, has a cost estimate of $25 million. Again, that is last year's prices, and will need to be updated for inflation. And the eastern corridor included Kohli Hammock, Los Olas Isles and the Beach, with a price tag just under $114 million. One thing I need to stress at this point is this breakdown of the character areas or the neighborhoods was just part of the bifurcation based on the status last year. As we talk through this, if the commission has a desire to advance some portions of the east and some portions of west, that is totally appropriate and can be done. So there's nothing that ties the east side and the west side only. Before we get into the financial assessment and the methodology that was put forth, I just want to give the commission a brief update on some of the other initiatives that we're working outside of this project. So the Los Olas Isles was funded separate in last year's budget, and there was about $500,000 allocated to it. Staff went through a warranting process. We've got all the warrants that we need to put the crosswalks in. We initiated the design phase earlier this month, and that will take about five to six months to complete. There'll be two crosswalks on Los Olas, both of them with a push button that will activate a flashing light for pedestrians to cross the road. When we get that package back, it should be ready with construction documents and bidding documents, so we can go into the market in early 2023 and hopefully start construction in the spring of 2020. In addition, we repurpose some operating dollars to analyze a dual left turn at Los Olas and 15th. And what this is doing right now, staff is working with a consultant right now that is modeling the impacts of traffic flow. If we would eliminate one of the turn lanes from westbound Los Olas to southbound 15th, if that lane would be eliminated, it would allow for additional space, so that way you can make the dual lefts coming from 15th to Los Olas. In that plan, we also will have a pavement marking plan and a layout plan, but we don't have funding at this point identified to actually implement those improvements. And the last item is Tunneltop Park. As you're fully aware, that project is being managed by FDOT. It is on schedule, and we believe that the park portion will be open by the end of this calendar year, and we're hoping sometime in mid-November. And so now we go into funding considerations. As part of the preliminary FY23 budget, which you heard some about earlier today, there's $7.1 million allocated towards this plan or this program. $100,000 of it is in the operating budget, and that is really to advance an assessment concept. If the commission gives a direction today, or if there's a will to advance an assessment, there's multiple steps that we'd have to go through throughout the process, which would need additional services and funding. So that's what that $100,000 is currently earmarked for. In addition, there's capital investment plan, three years, $2 million next year, 2.5 and 2.5. Staff identified that as design dollars, right? So we can keep the project moving as we work through what the funding mechanisms will be. There's some risk in doing that because you're funding the design without having construction dollars, but there's nothing that keeps us from re-appropriating how we use those dollars. So again, if the commission directs to advance one area or one character area in advance of the others, we could use those dollars for construction. We can use those for any use. So again, staff is here today to provide the updates and really get some direction from the commission on what the next steps are, and then staff can come back with a plan, a timeline, and kind of an implementation schedule of that desire. So we did hire STAN Tech, and they did a multi-month study of financial options. As you heard from them earlier today, they're an industry leader in this field, and we rely heavily on their expertise in financial modeling. And so what we tasked them with was to really look at the project, the funding mechanisms that the city has, what the industry offers, and really kind of present two or three different options that the city could advance. And in that memo, which was attached to this presentation, there was a proportional-based model that they were recommending. Andy from STAN Tech is still here, and he's going to present on some of his efforts and his findings. But before we get to that, it's important to note that we did apply a 20% inflation factor to the model, and we did remove the bridge costs because there are substantial dollar figures. And so the total number that we're looking at right now is just over $104 million that his assessment and his methodologies were focused on. They utilized all types of tax records, property data, GIS layers, everything that was in their resource package to be able to put this together. So it wasn't as easy as just going, this house needs to pay that, and this house needs to pay that. There's a lot of research, a lot of effort that's put into this, and we actually developed an interactive model, so as we take certain elements out, it will give us a real-time calculation of what that looks like. So it's very dynamic, and as the commission gives direction, we can then go back and relatively quickly provide updated information because the model's already constructed. And then, again, the last point before I turn it over to Andy, is that if an assessment is selected as a funding mechanism, the numbers that you see in this model and the content that Andy's going to share is not a final assessment number. It is a very preliminary number to kind of understand the ballpark and the magnitude that an assessment could bring, and it's really used to understand the appetite for the community and for the commission to understand how that decision is being made. And so if we do decide to go with an assessment model, again, we'll have to reengage with a consultant to kind of put all of it together. We'll have to finalize the scope on exactly what we're including in the assessment area, what parameters there are, if there's a boundaries going from X to Y, and take all that consideration and then come back with a final assessment package. I want to stress before Andy gets up here that the assessment process is not as simple as me coming up here and saying, we're going to assess everyone money. There's a very regimented process that's outlined. There has to be public hearings. You have to report to, I believe, the tax, the property appraiser by a certain date. You have to have public hearings associated with your budget. There's multiple steps and multiple phases for an assessment to happen, and this is, again, the very initial conversation for us to share our findings of what that magnitude could be. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions before I ask Andy to come up.
So the assessment approach is just... It's not a recommendation, it's just informational only, correct?
So STAN Tech did put a recommendation in there based on their experience and like opportunities, but again, this is us providing our feedback and our work product for direction.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, I did have one question with regards to removing the bridge costs, and I've been reading a lot about funds that are out there in the universe for bridges and other projects like that. So are we on a parallel path, or are we actually seeking funding, for instance, for the Sosporo Bridge? And are we out there looking for those types of funds for that now that especially it's been pulled out?
Yes, and I've been working closely with Alan Don, the Public Works Department. The MPO actually requested some information about bridges and what our needs are, so we do have some documents tied to that and a parallel track.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, I'll invite Andy from STAN Tech up to give his brief overview.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Mayor and Commissioners, as part of the evaluation of the potential project, we looked at different funding strategies. So outside of a conversation about do you use cash or do you use debt financing, our analysis was looking at what are the different strategies you can use to recover those costs, whether you pay go or whether you use debt. And so generally, we looked at three fundamental models that seem to be most well-suited to these types of projects outside of grants, outside of debt. And the cost recovery mechanisms really stem from looking at including it as part of your general fund and covering it within your existing millage rate. That would be a bit challenging, given the financial conversation that we just had, where we have basically a balanced structural budget that's proposed now. So if we were to add these additional costs into that budget, it would represent a substantial additional burden to the general fund. Conceptually, putting some costs like this into the general fund means all the constituents within the community would be paying for that as part of their taxes. We then looked at a couple of other mechanisms commonly used for specific project types and funding mechanisms. One is a municipal services taxing unit, or an MSTU, where you define a benefit area that the projects are providing a primary benefit to, a special benefit to, and then you apportion those costs to those properties as based on their taxable value in that defined area. So that's that municipal services taxing unit. If you were to use that mechanism, it does count against your 10-mill cap in Florida statutes, where you can't have a total millage that exceeds 10 mills per $1,000 of property value. An alternative approach is similarly defining a localized benefit area for the projects, but using a different apportionment methodology. So this is a municipal services benefit unit, and this would be akin to developing a special assessment and developing a methodology that would fairly apportion the cost to those in the defined area based upon their benefit. And so those are the three mechanisms that made the most sense for us to evaluate, but given funding limitations and looking at the types of potential impacts to the general fund, we looked at evaluating municipal services benefit unit and giving you a couple of different options to evaluate as part of how you could apportion those costs. And so this chart here shows if you were to implement a municipal services benefit unit for these costs, if you were to use two different methods, one would be just doing an equal cost per parcel, or if you were to use a more proportional method that looked at actual functional population of the different types of land uses in the area as the basis of apportioning the cost. And so the blue bar represents if you were to define a fee per parcel for the different land uses in the area, where you take the cost of the project, take the annual principal and interest if you were to borrow it, and divide it by the number of parcels, and it would be $956 per parcel based upon all these preliminary numbers. An alternative approach would be to...
That's $956 per parcel per year, for how many years?
30 years.
30 years, okay.
Yes, sir. Yep, these assumptions were all based on that 30-year financing term and a 4% interest rate. Then the comparative approach would be instead of looking at it equal per parcel, would be to instead look at functional population, and this takes into account a number of variables in terms of household sizes, occupancy for businesses, how many visitors they have and employees they have, to come up with what is that functional population that's really accessing the area and really gaining the benefit from the different types of improvements being made. And so in this particular case, you could see that the cost for a single-family home would be $524 per year for that same number of years, whereas the cost per unit for a condominium complex would be $374. So if it was a 100-unit condominium complex, it would be $37,400 for the entire complex. Similarly, if instead of being a condominium, it was an apartment that was simply on one parcel, instead of just paying one fee, they would pay $374 per dwelling unit, or the same, using a 100-unit example, the same $37,400. So this proportional basis takes out some anomalies that you might see on just doing it per parcel, because in each condominium complex, each unit is a parcel, whereas in an apartment building, they're not necessarily individual parcels. It's one parcel for the entire complex. So this method tends to equalize that and also takes into account the different trips that would be generated in the area based upon functional population, both visitors, household residents, as well as employees in the different types of businesses. And so you can see how these fees would be proportional to the functional population that's in the area that's benefiting from these improvements. And so we've looked at doing this, you know, in a way that you could have it for the entire east and west district combined, or there's a way that you could look at doing this for each of the defined character areas within the district identified in the plans. But fundamentally, these were the two approaches that made the most sense to us after looking at it in the context of a municipal services benefit unit and an assessment-type approach was equal per parcel or a proportional method, such as what we've outlined here. And so based on what we've seen and the anomalies on the parcel configuration, the proportional method seems to be the most advantageous to smooth out some of those anomalies if you were to move forward. But again, as Ben stated, there's a number of details that would need to be worked out in terms of final cost, what those would look like, how they would be apportioned amongst the areas, really specifically defining the areas and updating the assessment calculation. So again, these are, you know, I wouldn't say, quote, rough numbers, but they're very preliminary. I mean, there's a lot of work that would need to be done to really refine these. So it's really, as Ben said, intended to give folks a frame of understanding of what the order of magnitude impact is.
And does this question... This ultimately rolls up to the total $104.2 million total number, which excludes the bridge, right? And is Andrews to the beach?
I believe that's correct.
Andrews to the... Okay. And that $104.2 is different from, if we flip back to page two, is a more kind of updated full cost analysis than combining these two?
Correct. We took the 21 cost estimates, and as you're right, Commissioner Sorensen backed out the bridges, but then added an inflation factor to try to take it from $21 to $25. And so we added a 20% inflation factor for that, which, again, that's one of those things that you would absolutely need to modify, and hopefully the construction cost environment stabilizes, and it wouldn't be necessarily as much. But again, that's why these are order of magnitude numbers today, and a lot more would need to be done.
Yep, and then I guess one of my questions is going to... We don't have to get to that this moment, Mayor. Mayor, but is if we did have some form of bifurcation, just a sense of impact around the assessment, kind of impact that that would have, obviously it'd draw it down significantly if you're only doing part of it.
Sure.
And this assessment also would be subject to reduction based on grant funding, federal or state, right? That would further draw that down. This is solely funding through the assessment, right?
That's a very good point. It's assuming a 30-year financing, 4% for 100% of these costs that we-
100%. Does the 104.2 million include or not include the 7.1 million CIP?
I'll let Ben answer that.
I'm guessing.
It is not. It was based at a point in time where 104 was our baseline number.
So-
So Vice Mayor, if I can-
Yeah, please.
It doesn't include the 7 million that's in the preliminary budget, which again, has to get formally approved by the commission for next year's budget.
Yep.
And at the same time, I have staff looking through all the existing capital improvement projects through all different departments. If it's parks for streetlights, if it's public works for utilities, and we're trying to cross-reference all of those existing projects and overlap that with our project area to find out if there's other savings in there as well. So again, the 104.2 million dollars is just a baseline based on the point in time where we were at.
Great. So if I'm hearing it right, the 104, as we budgeted right now, we have budgeted in CIP FY '23, '24, '25, total of 7.1, that would come off the 1.4? And possibly more would come off the 1.4 of other ancillary but related CIP projects?
Conceptually, assuming inflation's 20%, including all of those different factors, but yes, conceptually that would be the case.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Any further?
No, that wraps up, Mayor. We're here for questions.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Morades.
Yes, I was listening to Ben. Ben, when you say 104 million, what numbers were you referring to? Because I see the 113 and the 25.
Yeah, so on the slide in the presentation, that's based off of the numbers that were proposed last year as part of the study.
Okay.
What we did in the technical memos, we took those dollar figures, we removed the bridges-
Oh, you removed the bridges.
And we inflated it by 20% for inflation to get the number 104.2.
Okay. Do we have a number that includes, okay, that's La Solas, that's the beach, the downtown and the shops, this goes to 12th, does that include Coley Hammock or is Coley Hammock is, I guess, do we have a number that includes the downtown, the shops and Coley Hammock?
So right now, we have two different corridors and they're not blended. But again, we created that dynamic model. So if the direction is to go add Coley Hammock to the Western Corridor, we can easily do that and come back with updated information.
Okay, so we would add Coley Hammock to the 25 million?
Correct. We, if that, yes, if that's the direction, we can do that.
All right, and then we would take away our 7 million, which we're contributing, and then we'd look for the rest of it. Okay, I'm clear on that, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry, just if you can refresh my memory, in the original plan that we adapted, the Eastern West, was Coley Hammock in the East or the West?
Coley Hammock was in the Eastern Corridor.
They were in the East in the original bifurcation of the plan that we approved. Okay, thanks.
So when did that switch happen?
So if you go back to May of last year, we brought the, I think, the initial review of the master plan. And at that point, the downtown and the shops said, we're ready and we want to move forward. And there were some unknowns or some unclarity on the other neighborhoods and so-
Those shops go all the way up to 15th, 16th?
Correct. In our plan, they stop at 12th, just based on the neighborhoods. But I agree 100% Mayor that it makes sense to include probably all the way to 17th and Sosporo Bridge-
Right.
-as part of the shops and downtown area.
All right, well, we'll figure that at some point, okay.
If we bifurcated, my sense is we would only assess that which we are moving forward on. For example, if we decide to only do one portion, from a timing standpoint, we're only going to assess that portion.
And that's a good point. It's very gray when it gets to that conversation because the assessments are typically based on a benefit or a benefit to the user.
Yep.
And so if you only advance, we'll say, the shops area, and that would say that only, the only benefit gained is the shops area. So that's part of that $100,000 that we put into the operating budget for next year, is that if we get direction from the commission to move forward with a certain plan, we can engage a consultant to come back and defend the methodology of why we would do a certain assessment and how we do it.
Yeah, yeah. I think, yeah, I think everyone in the city would benefit, but we would, I think the assessment would have to focus on those in that area.
Correct.
All right.
I agree, Ben.
Right, okay.
We have a few people who've signed up to speak, but before we do that, there was a comment in, on page, I think it's three of seven, Tunneltop Park, project remains on schedule and should be completed by the end of 2022 with the total tunnel rehabilitation the end of 2023. So if the Tunneltop Park completion is planned for the end of 2022, is the area going to be usable? In other words, will it be a completed park that can be used as a completed park? And we do installations of, you know, the landscaping and pathways and artwork or whatever that we're going to put there, that can be done by the end of 2022?
From my understanding, it's up to the contractor's discretion, but there are incentives that FDOT put in their contract for the park to be done by November. And if they make those marks and there's, it's in their best interest to do that. So right now, everything is aligned that the park would be open and usable at the end of 2022.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a few people who've signed up to speak and I'll call your name in threes, Mike Waymoth, Mary Furtig and Tricia Holliday. Mr. Waymoth, oh, there you are. Please come up to the podium and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioner, Mike Waymoth of La Solas Company. First off, I want to thank the two Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner, Mayor. This has challenged the gestation period of an elephant, which for those who don't know, that's at least two years. So anyway, thank you for sticking with us because I think we've gotten to a point where this is really, really good. And I just signed up to talk in case there was some rebuttal or if you guys had questions of me, but just a couple of quick observations since I've got the microphone. First of all, Tunneltop Park is going on schedule. FDOT shared with me their schedule back when they started and they're on it. And so Ben's right, it should be done November, December. I participated in a call last week with the Cordino Group, who happens to be managing that as well. They confirmed that it's on track. And my big concern is a lot of times when you get FDOT or governments involved, you have to get certifications and testing and this and that. And we're being told that as soon as it's done, it'll be usable. So November, December, we're hopeful. And part of the reason I bring that up is twofold. One, I hope you guys get over there while they've got this lane diet going on and there's one lane in each direction because traffic moves, no, seriously, traffic moves very well through there, very well. So I hope you get in there to see that and experience it. The next thing is, I'm supportive of the plans come forward with the method that Stantec is suggesting to do it. Obviously, there's some devils in the detail as far as the costs go and who's responsible for what, but I think that it's a fair way to move forward. And then lastly, I heard a couple of people talk about the line of bifurcation and where to adjust it. I support moving it down to the Sosporo Canal. I, we don't have, I think Charlie and Steve may have some ownership east of the Hemersee. I don't, so I don't want to say I don't care. I care very much because this, you know, it's extension of La Solas and it's an extension of us, but I think moving the line of bifurcation down to the Sosporo Canal makes a lot of sense. So I'm here if there's any other questions, if somebody wants to know anything.
Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mary Furtig followed by Tricia Holliday followed by Janet Gualtieri.
I am here on behalf of my neighborhood. Do I get five minutes?
As long as you want, Mary.
Thank you. You are such a, thanks. Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Idlewild Improvement Association. Our board has unanimously passed a motion which reads, "The Idlewild Improvement Association opposes any special assessment unless it is voted on and approved by 60% of the residents of our neighborhood. Rather than communicating with the members of the La Solas Mobility Task Force or the neighborhoods, the first proposal, notice that this proposal to impose a special assessment came when the agenda was mailed out Thursday night at 8:30. Not even a notice to impact it neighborhoods that this was being discussed on today's agenda. Our neighborhood has worked with other associations throughout the aisles as well as the Venetian condominium for the past 10 years. We've watched as the city has conducted and financed study after study, spent millions of dollars in other neighborhoods to implement solutions that further negatively impacted the chief issue we were trying to address, mobility. We felt hope when Commissioner Sorenson and Commissioner Glassman created the La Solas Mobility Task Force, like we might finally have a voice in our future. And we felt defeat when over a year ago, when a year ago, June 15th last year, over the objections of almost every association in our section of La Solas, along with other key stakeholders, the commission voted to move ahead. But it was clearly stated at that meeting, and it is in the minutes, that this was a vision. Somehow, the city put a price tag on the vision. Our first question, what exact changes were priced and how much do they cost? Consider this a public records request for the backup to exactly what $104 million is going to pay for. Question two, during public and private meetings on this matter, we were told that this was a plan to benefit the entire city. In fact, the bulk of the traffic in our section of La Solas is going to and from the beach. So why would we be asked to pay for that? Question three, over the past 25 years, there have been a few examples of special assessments. And we just want to know when, other than the wave, were neighborhoods assessed without being given an opportunity to vote? Question four, with all of the problems facing our area, particularly those dealing with sea level rise, why would you choose to assess us for viewing areas, benches, nearing the roads by 12 to 18 inches? Question five, a 30-year assessment addresses today's issues at the risk of not having resources to address tomorrow's issues. You are literally considering imposing an assessment that will likely outlive many of the people who now live in the area. The conversation today is very premature. To even contemplate throwing more money at this issue is wrong. To even consider assessing neighborhoods for 30 years for a project they did not support is wrong. Over the past year, I've heard it said that many people love this project. If that is true, then let us vote on it. Let us vote whether or not it is worth spending $104 million on this rather than the other issues confronting us. And I just now, that was the end of my prepared comments, but I want to say, you know, there was a reason why you had an East and a West. There's a reason why you didn't go. I can see the private conversations have occurred, but there was a reason why you stopped at 12th, because there were some very serious access issues for the people in the aisles and for the beach if you stop at, if you take it all the way to 17th. Those issues have never been resolved that we know of, at least there's been no public conversation as to how they've been resolved. And those are major issues of access for us. We had, and every conversation said, all right, after all these years, up to 12th, go ahead with the plan, we understand. But we stood here a year ago and we talked about getting in and out of our neighborhoods with one lane in each direction. It is worse this year than it was last year. It will be worse next year. It has continually progressively gotten worse. And I just question with our EMS times, with our flooding in our area, with all of the other environmental issues that face us, why are we not doing a thorough study of access as was committed to last year at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia Holliday followed by Janet Gualtieri followed by Fred Brodsky.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, Mary basically said everything and she did a good job doing it. When I read this in the backup for this item, it says, "Due to potential timeline for securing funding and finalizing this project, 2025 is the first year that construction could reasonably be assumed to begin." However, in the beginning of this project, when our Public Works Director Raj Verma proposed that this plan could not go forward until a three-year, $25 million infrastructure project had been completed, especially in the aisles area, I'm trying to figure out the timeline here and I'm having a difficult time doing it. Whether you want to believe it or not, the infrastructure in the aisles or sewer and our water pipes are disintegrating. And to go forward with any project without addressing that crumbling infrastructure would be negligent in my mind. To ask residents who have consistently voted against the La Solas Mobility Plan at our homeowners association meetings in the aisles areas to pay for any amount, although on the updated plan, for a single residence, it would be between $524 to $956 for 30 years, that's just insulting. Now that this updated plan is divided into two quarters, I was going to say that I didn't have a problem with the Western Corridor, but then when Michael Waymoth came up and said that he wanted to extend it to the Sosporo Bridge, I disagree 100% for the reasons that Mary just had reiterated up here. You can't do that. We're already being blocked in. We don't have a way out. So do not change the parameters of the Eastern and Western. I have no problem if you keep it the way that it is. If they want to be assessed, that's their prerogative. But you cannot, cannot, this is not a mobility plan if you do that. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Janet followed by Fred Brodsky followed by Susie Bailey.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this subject. I have a couple of points and not prepared to read it, but one is, we talked about a master plan being approved last May. That has never formally been published. We were just told in May it was a vision. I think before you assess your constituents, you should show us what we're paying for. That's the first thing. I do believe, as my two predecessors mentioned, they should be kept separate and should go to the 12th Street instead of 17th. I agree with that. On the Eastern Corridor only, our associations have been meeting and it's a definitive no by the majority of all the homeowners associations, including myself. We talk about needing the benefits. We on the La Solas aisle do not see any of the benefits that we would get for paying $55 million piece of this proportion. So we don't think we're getting any benefits and maybe if we see the plan, we'll see what those benefits are. But right now, we're going to have a difficult time selling this to our homeowners association because they don't see any benefit and they were opposed to it to begin with, let alone being assessed for it. And that's about it. That covered all my points. Thank you very much for-
Okay, thank you, Janet. Fred followed by Susie Bailey followed by Jerry Bailey.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Fred Brodsky. My wife and I live in Seven Isles. We have 300 homes-
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
We have 300 homes in Seven Isles and I'm shocked to see the numbers today where we would be asked potentially, subject to deductions, to pay $9 million toward the cost of this plan. My comments have been approved by the entire board of the Seven Isles Homeowners Association. At the least, the majority of the HOAs in the aisles have repeatedly voiced our objections to the La Solas Mobility Plan as currently envisioned. I know the Cordino Group, I'm a land planner, the original proposals made no sense with elevated walkways, highways and a variety of other things, just inconceivable to me. These objections that were voiced by the homeowners associations have never been adequately addressed by transportation or the city or anyone else for that matter. You may have listened, but you- You may have listened, but you haven't heard us, I don't believe. Consequently, any funding alternative that includes assessments from these aisles homeowners will be vigorously opposed. Specifically, the municipal service taxing unit, which is based on, quote, "community desires," cannot be applied, as the vast majority of the HOAs involved do not desire the mobility improvements as they are in current, currently envisioned. The municipal service benefit is likewise inappropriate, as the vast majority of HOAs of the aisle segment of the mobility plan perceive no benefit, as has been said repeatedly, from the plan as currently envisioned. So it can't be applied because the benefit's not there. It is the opinion of the Seven Isles Homeowners Association that any funding be obtained from the general fund if mobility plan advances in its current condition format. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzy Bailey, followed by Jerry Bailey, followed by Charles Ladd.
Good afternoon, and thank you. As the President of the Nermi Ailes HOA, I first want to ask the status of the three-year, $25 million infrastructure project that our Public Works Head Raj Verma at that time said had to be completed before anything gets done, tunnel or La Solis Mobility Project. I would like to see what the status of that is, if you guys could provide that at some time. Secondly, I'd like to remind the commission of the votes that were taken. I know you've heard this over and over, but I'm trying, we're trying to remind you, there were votes taken at HOA meetings, and, and they, we were trying to be the voice of those people. I'd like it stated that our HOA voted unanimously in opposition of the proposed Cordino Plan over and over. And, and we actually had Cordino at our meetings, so it could be explained in detail. It was suggested at one meeting, when we were going over and over, as you talked about the, the amount of meetings we had, to let the downtown business area, everything east of 12th, I mean, excuse me, west of 12th, move forward with their plans, and possibly try out two-way pairs on 12th and 15th. Mayor Dean, you even heard that suggestion. It wasn't going to cost a lot. You're turning one lane around. We said, let's just try it to see if it gets traffic moving. There was someone that was very opposed to that, that seems to stop that. I think it can't hurt to at least try it out before you start spending money on two-way left-hand turn lanes. We also asked to look into the red flags, Suspirro, which it sounds like that you are doing. And we are, we've constantly requested, please do not close 16th, because that's, I mean, we have one lane, and then if you close that, we're down, I mean, we have, that's not even used frequently. It's only for, used for a few people. They have speed bumps, it keeps it slow, and it's usually, it's only for people that are going eastbound on Broward. So at this point, we're, please do not close that. We also included two other safety issues that we've been asking for. One was the dangerous blind spots that we inherited when you guys did the bridges. We asked that be taken off this plan and dealt with, which, how many years ago that was, five, six years ago? Those still are there, and that hasn't been dealt with. And as Mayor Trentellus, you know, that we've been asking for crosswalks, which thankfully y'all are doing, and we appreciate that. But we, we have to remember that's separate from this, this mobility plan. Last year, when y'all voted in favor of this plan, you told us not to worry, that it's just a vision. And as Mary said, we received this, an email late on Thursday that put a price tag to that vision. So now we're asking, now you guys are going to ask those residents that voted over and over, that oppose this, to now help pay for it. Some of this will be $900 to $1,400 a year for 30 years. And I just ask you, do you really think all those residents that have opposed this are going to be happy to pay for this? Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Bailey, followed by Charles Ladd, followed by Debbie Isinger.
Hello, Jerry.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Jerry.
Yeah, so I, I've been part of this process from the early stages. I walked the street with Commissioner Glassman, my wife, many other people, a lot of HOA presidents. We have been voicing our concerns, what we liked, what we didn't like. We didn't ask for much, actually. We didn't ask for this whole thing, honestly. We asked for crosswalks. But all, we get from Mr. Glassman's, Commissioner Glassman's, I understand, I understand. And you, we came back, and very little has changed. We want clean drinking water, and we want sewers that work. We don't want to be Ria Vista again. Our major utilities taken care of. Shade trees, great. But it, it's just curious to me that such a beautiful street needs to be redone. I mean, people are paying $2.5 million a house to tear them down and build here. They're coming here by the droves. They must think it's okay. I mean, I think it's gorgeous. And then, as everybody, ladies have said before me, you're asking us to pay for it. Many of us can afford it, many can't. You got these kids that, that young peo, I call them kids, they're young people, I'm an old people, but they're moving into a place like Marin Towar. You're going to lump 12 grand on these kids that can hardly make a mortgage now with the interest rates going up? And that's at 4%. I understand you put a 20% inflation factor, but 4% on this payment for 30 years? That, that doesn't, that seems kind of low for me. It's, it's going to go up way more. So it's not going to cost these, these younger people 12 grand for a condo. It's not going to cost us $33,000 per single-family home. It's going to cost a lot more than that, for something we do not like. So, look, it, it seems to me, and this is my opinion, that you give us time to speak, and thank you, but do you really listen? I, I don't think so, and I'm going to tell you why. It's because a little over four years ago, there overnight became bike lanes from 12th to the Suspirro Bridge, or, or thereabouts, to the 711. Not this commission's doing, but you guys inherited it. So I voiced my concern to my commissioner, and he said, look, we're going to have a survey. Many people like this. Many people like the bike lanes. Just like you say, many people want this, this new vision done. So the city did a survey of people that wanted the bike lanes and people that didn't want the bike lanes. Over 50% responded to the city survey that they did not want the bike lanes. Yet here, the bike lanes are still there. So that's what makes me think that many in this commission do not really care what the people think.
Charlie Ladd, followed by Debbie Isinger, followed by Jackie Scott. And Jackie, you're the last person. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak that has not signed up? Got to sign up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I, I agree on the bike lane, and that's why I think when we turn this into-
Agree on that, that the bike lane should not be there?
Correct.
Okay.
And I, I think that's the reason when we turn this, if, I, I would like to see the project bifurcated. I think there's consensus for the retail portion of the project. We can deal with those bike lanes to the residents' relief by going all the way to the Suspirro Canal, because that is part of the plan to rework that area. I think the retail should be consistent from the tunnel to the end of the retail, which is at about 16th. Speaking for Steve Hudson, myself, George Rahal, is second major property owners to La Solis Company. I think we'd be very open to some kind of assessment based on front footage on La Solis. That section of La Solis is the area that is crying out for help. It's falling apart. The curbs are falling apart, the drainage is bad, sidewalks are too narrow. We all know that. That's the first place that we can get benefit. I think the whole city will benefit from that. La Solis aisles will benefit from that and a better shopping district. But I believe the commercial property owners are ready to take on that responsibility so we can move forward. So hopefully, we, we have your support, and we can get, get rolling to make a big improvement to the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ben, when the city commission made its vote, we, you know, the, the, I'll wait for you to come up. When the city commission voted, tell, tell us again, this, the area of La Solis Boulevard that we agreed on, and the area we did not yet come to a decision on. My understanding was we had come to a decision on the, adopting the plan that related to the commercial area of La Solis. Is that correct?
So I, I don't have the date specific, but we came to the commission the first time, I want to probably say May, and we provided information. The feedback was to bifurcate it into two different sections.
Right.
Commercial, what you're talking about. We called it the western, and then the eastern corridor. We bifurcated those. Cordino updated both the plans, and we brought them back on the, I believe, the last meeting before recess.
Mm-hmm.
For commission review. The intent was that the commercial items had all the issues addressed, and you were going to vote to approve that. That happened.
That happened.
That happened.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I'm just hearing a lot of different things here, and I just want to make sure that my memory is correct.
But we also did more.
Yes.
Well, wait, he's not finished yet. Okay, go ahead.
You think he is.
No, no, I, I'm just, I know that that part is done. Okay.
Correct. That, that part happened, the commercial got approved. The eastern plan was discussed, and then there was a couple modifications made, I believe, on the diocese that night.
Right.
It was also accepted as well. So both of them.
Okay.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. It's always good to be here and work together. Yesterday, and I'm kind of the new kid on the block with the Neighborhood Association, I'm president of the Hendrix Isle, Isle of Venice Neighborhood Association. And yesterday, the presidents of the Neighborhood Associations along the Finger Islands, we had met virtually. So I got brought up to speed on this La Solis Mobility Plan that's being addressed at today's conference meeting. There was unanimous support, unless I'm wrong, and Mary Furtick will tell me, in opposing the consultants, and it was a recommendation for creating an MSTU for the property owners that are along La Solis aisles to pay for the aisles corridor of this La Solis Mobility Plan. I got to tell, it's entirely unacceptable, and his comments, it just seems absurd for consultant to justify this recommendation, maybe other recommendations, but this one, to say, it could be problem, these are the quotes from what you have in your backup, "It could be problematic if the city chose to increase property taxes since a citywide property tax increase would affect all taxpayers, including those not directly benefiting or in the proximity of the improvement." As all of you know, La Solis Boulevard is not a local road that benefits only the property owners living in close proximity. La Solis Boulevard is an iconic road, and it's known worldwide as the heart of Fort Lauderdale. The vast majority of travelers along this stretch of roadway are visitors from near and far, and traveling to visit the many attractions offered by Fort Lauderdale. It's the connecting road leading from the mainland to the most popular beach areas throughout all of Broward County, and maybe up and down the coast of Florida. So should the city even wish to consider creating a special MSTU for the property owners living along La Solis aisles? Perhaps the logical thing would be to consider privatizing the stretch of the roadway along the Finger Islands, and allow only the residents along these Finger Isles to travel this portion of the roadway if we're going to pay and subsidize it. The recent growth throughout Fort Lauderdale and Broward County has significantly increased traffic along La Solis Boulevard, making it a challenge for us local residents, the property owners, to even safely exit our streets onto La Solis Boulevard. And this traffic congestion is not caused by us, it is caused by our visitors locally and worldwide. So I appreciate you listening to me on this, and I certainly hope you will consider, as you make your recommendations, these facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, followed by Nancy Thomas.
Good afternoon. I am extremely excited about this plan coming back to you today and your ability to move forward with giving them the authority to start the design process, et cetera. I think Coley Hammock and myself feels totally differently than the people to the east of us. Our neighborhood is right smack divided by La Solis Boulevard, which, as we all agree, is one of the jewels of the city. And it's imperative that we do everything we can to upgrade it and support the businesses as well as the whole area. It's also imperative that we choose a boundary that's natural and that encompasses the whole Boulevard going east to the Suspirro and Rio Navarro Canal. Because as you know, we have businesses east of 12th, east of 15th. And if we're going to do this, let's do it right. Let's make that whole stretch of the Boulevard be harmonious, work together, and I, I'm really looking forward to, to this happening. I've only been doing this for about 30 years, and I feel like this is the farthest we've gotten. I think there was an awful lot of camaraderie and working together in the process, but somehow this has fallen apart. But it is what it is. I think we have different views east of the Suspirro, Rio Navarro, and different views to the west. I also know that Ben Rogers told me, as part of the budget moving forward, there is $100,000 in the budget to go ahead and do the traffic plan, the study, that you all agreed to. So please move forward. Let's start the planning. Let's not, let this die. And please, if you're going to bifurcate, make it at that natural boundary between Coley Hammock West from the Suspirro, Rio Navarro, and then you have the east boundary. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Nancy Thomas, anybody else wants to speak on this? So wrap it up, Nancy.
Okay. Take it home.
Take it home.
First of all, I, I want you to know, I was, I've not been involved in this La Solis Mobility thing at all. I've focused on other things. And I have lived in the city a very long time, and so I'm learning a lot about it, actually, through this process today, and the information I've learned recently. So I'm speaking about it as a citizen, and as a taxpayer, and as an analytical person to figure out, I'm trying to figure out what is this all about. I understood the beautification aspect of the La Solis Street and yada, yada. I understand all that. I understand they want a crosswalks, people who live there, that's great. But here's my question. What, what are we trying to, what is the city trying to achieve with this overall? Has there been a needs assessment, a specific needs assessment? And also, in these segments, these segments seem very different. You've got, you know, down near Andrews, then you've got the shops area, then you've got the residential area. You know, I'm not clear, and if there's a place I can access this, please direct me. But what do you, overall, as a project, what are you trying to achieve? Where's the needs assessment, and how will this approach? I guess there's no plan yet, although there's some dollars assessed, associated with it. How will this plan meet it? The other thing is, I under, I know there's been a task force, they voted no against this vision or this approach, and the HOAs voted no. That's a lot of people who spend a lot of time analyzing what's going on with this proposal. What I haven't heard also, and again, maybe the information's out there, but the priorities to me on that street, because I live on the barrier island in Harbor Inlet, safety, fire rescue, evacuation, have those things all been taken into consideration? And, you know, what are we getting for up to millions and millions of dollars? And by the same token, you're talking about the tunnel, which will move people supposedly, that's, could be $100 million. What, what is trying to be achieved, and maybe it needs to be bifurcated project-wise, and solve different problems along the way? I'm speaking as a taxpayer and a resident, and I think it sounds to me like the people who've been very involved have some very, have some excellent points that need to be. And then there's the whole financial thing, and I'm big on that.
All right, so you, you asked some really, really important questions, but I can tell you that over the last several years, all those questions have been asked, and many of them have been addressed. You haven't been part of the process, so I don't expect you to know, know that that's been going on. But Vice Mayor and Commissioner Glassman have, have participated and helped head up a mobility group, which, first of all, identified the, the issues that each character area had, had concerns about. There are five character areas that were identified on La Solis Boulevard. Each one has their own special needs and expectations. And then there were, then they hired a, a consultant called the Cordino Group, which participated in the discussion. And then there were some, some conclusions that were come to. Some were, some were in favor of the conclusions, some were not in favor of the conclusions. Some were, some were in favor of the conclusions, some were not in favor of the conclusions, some were in favor of some of it, some were in favor of others of, other parts of it. So all those things you're asking today, great, but they've been addressed. And, and so today, we're talking about some recommendations that have been made by our department to come up with funding solutions or funding opportunities and we'll discuss those. There are pros and cons to each funding option and that's something we're going to discuss today. But I appreciate your coming up to speak.
But the, if the task for, you, you took the time to assemble a task force that I'm sure they spent many hours on.
No, they spent many years.
Okay, years.
Years.
And these are, these are people who really know this city and are very bright and care about the city. If they've, the majority of unanimously, unanimously voted no.
That's not true.
Yeah.
That's not true.
Okay, well.
Not true at all.
But there were a lot of people who were opposed?
This is the second time you've said the task force voted against this, that's just not true. I don't know what else to say.
Okay.
That's not true.
I'm sorry if that's.
And by the way, the commission hasn't made any decisions here. These are just, this is just staff coming up. We haven't made any decisions whatsoever, so, so don't think like we're automatically adopting this. We're not assessing each neighbor, you know, thousands of dollars, we haven't done anything yet.
It's the beginning of a discussion.
This is just the beginning of a discussion.
Right, but we all, we've all seen over time how a project can take on a life of its own. And you've gone this far and you've spent this much money, maybe we should just keep going. The point is, the citizens should have a strong voice in this.
And they have had a strong voice.
Okay, great.
For the last several years.
But I'm hearing a lot of frustration from people who live on, off La Solis. And as somebody who lives over that way, and I am very concerned about safety, you know, all these events on the beach, that La Solis is critical, forgetting people out of there when they need it. So if there are any barriers to that, I mean, has fire rescue been like consulted on all this with all these?
We're adding a new EMS substation on La Solis Boulevard.
Good. Hey, whatever's been done, if it's, if it's favorable, fine. It just seems to me, there are a lot of questions and the whole issue of, of assessing the residents on that, on that corridor, I think is ridiculous.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this? I think I'm just going to start the discussion with the Commissioners and the Vice Mayor who, who led this group. So we'll start with Vice Mayor. Do you have any comments you'd like to make with regard in response to the, the presentation made by staff?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. So just like to thank, again, Commissioner Glassman and just working together on this and staff, Ben Rogers and leadin' it, just been great with our, working with our consultants and the neighbors to continue this discussion and opportunities. A couple of things I wanted to just touch on, if we're going through this, is, let's start off just some of the comments made. Chris, I wanted to get just a, a sense of the, anytime we hear about infrastructure and the status of our infrastructure, Chris, one of the things I will, always want to try to provide is accurate information in terms of how our water and sewer infrastructure is doing. Different parts of the city can have different kind of aging infrastructure. Some are new and in good shape, others are in need. So when we hear about the Isles and the infrastructure, some, you know, inferences were made, there are some real needs there. Could Alan or someone give us an update?
Yeah.
How are we doing on infrastructure there?
I'd like to have Alan Dodd.
Yeah.
Come give you an update as to what projects are in the pipeline or what's already been done over there, good, much has.
Yeah. And then just overall status, hey, we're in good shape there, not in good shape, or what, what the needs are.
Alan Dodd, Public Works Director. And I did not come prepared to go through a list.
That's fine.
But I, I think the biggest one that they were concerned, raised on was the Southeast Isle Stormwater Project, which is one of the seven priority neighborhoods that we have for stormwater improvements. It's a $30 million project, it has already been designed and it is in our CIP for construction to start in 2025. Now, as we're working in this project, if for some reason, the schedules for, for mobility improvements does come sooner, we would just coordinate with them and start our project a little bit sooner. It's a bond-funded project and the sequencing is really based on our capacity to put out on contracts. So I, I think that was the biggest one and we do have flexibility, we have the funding in hand so that we could move that project forward as needed to coordinate with the construction.
Great. So that's stormwater and I know the Isles have very low-lying areas, just how are we doing just generally from a stormwater perspective? I know there are challenges there, but.
Yes. Within the water and the sewer system, we've done a number of projects throughout the city. We have funded and replaced almost 20% of the forced main infrastructure in this area in particular. About four or five years ago, we put a very large, new forced main down La Solis that went under the intercoastal.
Okay.
So the sewer wastewater forced main infrastructure is in good shape there. We have a number of small pump stations, I can't think of any to mind right now that are in emergency need or anything, they're all running and being maintained as, as per schedule.
Okay. So if I'm hearing you right, then from a sewer infrastructure standpoint, the Isles are actually in good, feel like in, in good shape and, and appropriately maintained right now?
Yes, and, and we are executing our, our water and sewer master plan, the CIP projects that we have, are addressing our needs, our, our most critical needs as priorities.
And seawalls as well.
Seawalls.
Seawalls as well.
And seawalls. We, we just awarded and gave an NTP for the Hendrix Isle Seawall. We have four other seawalls along La Solis that will also be awarded and constructed this year to help alleviate flooding issues. And then we do have, I, I believe, a couple million dollars, $3.6 million in next year's budget.
Yep.
Seawall priorities, which also will be addressing flooding issues in this area.
Great. And I've done this with some neighborhoods in my district, is asked Public Works through the City Manager, could I get a little bit of analysis on the sewer pipes and, you know, kind of age and so forth? Could the neighborhood, if they wanted, kind of get some form of analysis of that or, or how the pipes are doing?
Well, yes, we have hundreds of miles of pipes, so we can go in and look at specific neighborhoods and we are doing, as part of the water mapping requirement, under our consent order, a mapping of all the water distribution system in the city. We'll be awarding a contract for that in the next few months and then the work will be completed over the next two years to give us a good condition, or understanding of the condition of all the pipes, as well as the age, when they were installed and the type of materials. And, and we will use that to adjust our priorities as part of our asset management program.
Okay. Great. And so that'll be for the water, so ongoing evaluation of the water, but right now.
And we have already done that on the wastewater side.
Yep.
All of the, the collection system has already been mapped out.
Okay. And from a water infrastructure, drinking water infrastructure right now in the Isles, how are we doing? Just, I know you don't have the, the nuanced details, but.
We're, we're, we're doing well. We have had several breaks, as you know, over the past couple of years. And one of the problems that we do have down in the Isles is that they're dead-end pipes.
Right.
That going out into the Isles, which are a little bit more challenging, once we do the repairs, if we have low pressure to, to do the back tea testing. And so we do a number of precautionary boil water notices there. But I don't believe the, we have a problem with breaks in that area. It's, it's very typical to areas along the waterways where you have the, the groundwater levels and the impacts of saltwater.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's, that's helpful. Thanks, Alan, for sharing that. Chris, what's the, so, you know, we're talking about the assessment possibility. If the commission decides, hey, let's bifurcate it and let's just assess one portion, what is that just assessment process? In other words, today's a discussion, you're going to get a general sense of what we're interested in, if, whatever that portion that we might be interested in assessing, then what happens next? I mean, this is, this would be a long process to actually, you know, with engagement and so forth, what does that look like?
Yeah, it, it would be a fairly lengthy process, one with a lot of, a lot of involvement. So if I point you to, we just did a groundbreaking on an undergrounding project in the Isles. So if I point you to a similar process that resulted in a different outcome, this would be a very similar type process to what we went through to get to the undergrounding and, and defining districts and areas and those affected. The city attorney could probably more technically tell you what the right terms are, but that's a, a comparable example of a process that would be similar to this.
Yeah, which would, just for those who might not know what that process has been, just generally, what would happen next?
Well, you have to identify the area affected and there has to be significant buy-in from the area that is affected in the form of voting for it. And we have to set up certain legal parameters that go along with identifying a district like that. And you've got just some pretty significant time and, and energy into, into identifying who all those people are and how you package it up. But it's not something that happens overnight, if that's what you're asking. There's, there's a, there's a process.
In other words, the, and correcting if I'm wrong, but the City Commission actually can't impose a special taxing district on, especially taxing district, they have to support that in, in a process. Is that, am I saying that right, Alan, or?
Well, what, part of the process, to sort of go further than what the City Manager stated, and we haven't talked to StanTech with regards to these municipal service taxing units, because our understanding is these are creatures of state statute that are for counties to create, so these would be, have to be created by the county and we'd have to consent to them.
Okay.
We could do what we did with the undergrounding. We would have to enact an ordinance, because right now, the only ordinance we have that has that methodology and that process is for undergrounding purposes. So we would have to go ahead and enact a, a mechanism and a procedure, as you've stated, and, and build into that, very similar, I'm sure, to what we did with undergrounding. But that enactment would have to take place and those parameters would be set forth in there as to, you know, what sort of voting requirements would be in place and so on and so forth.
Okay. So I mean, again, this is going to be a long process with a lot of engagement, a lot of opportunity. Okay, great. Let's see, what else? The, when we look at, you know, bifurcating, I think, you know, clear, good feedback from folks on the eastern end, not interested in, you know, being participating in this, which, you know, for me, I hear that loud and clear and wouldn't want to force that on someone who's not interested in it. I think also the, Ben, correcting if I'm wrong, but if, if this was to include 12th to 17th, just hypothetically, the analysis would be, okay, how can we make, from a mobility and efficiency standpoint, 12th to 17th most efficient for all as, as much as possible? And so there's no predetermined what would happen there, it would be part of a evaluative process to determine how do we improve the flow of traffic? Is that what would happen with 12th and 17th?
Yeah, so all of the information's already been kind of identified at, at a vision plan level.
Right.
It just happens to be in two different plans. So if the direction was to incorporate Coley Hammock with the shops in downtown, what we would do is we would take it to the next step, which would be the design phase, and we would take those three areas out of the master plan and forward that to the design firm to say, all right, let's start designing this.
Yep.
The vision's already outlaid, it just happens to be in two different documents.
Yep.
And then to further provide information on your request about next steps, in the StanTech memo on page seven and eight, they, they do a very high-level next steps, which talks about finalizing the scope, working with the consultant to finalize the tax rules, certain meetings that are required along the way. So there are some additional talking points on next steps.
Okay. And so if we went from Andrews to 17th, again, right now, we have kind of a vision, right? Is that what you're saying? We have a vision, an idea? So that would take, the next kind of evaluative step would be more of a design process for that, right?
That's correct.
And in that process, part of that pro, design process would be a further evaluation and study, right, of traffic patterns and so forth? Is that correct? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I mean, we can incorporate some of those elements into it if need be.
Yep. So you kind of further evaluate traffic and flows and what might work, what might not work? I'm assuming we'd also continue to have very much public engagement in that discussion, like this, don't like this solution, that would be part of our process, is that?
So the design process isn't going to be as engaged with the public?
Right.
The vision plan, if you recall, for example, 15th and La Solis, we talked about what is roundabout with a free flow lane look like, what does a restricted roundabout look like, what does dual lefts look like? We kind of evaluated all the different options. And then based off of the, the engineering study, the conversation, we ended up with the final determination in, in the vision plan. So we would take that and design it up to a certain point, maybe 30%.
Yep.
And maybe have a comment period, design some more, up to 60%, comment period, 90% comment period, but there's not as much back and forth engagement.
Yeah, great, but there will be some and that will be talking commission with you and kind of as we're moving along and so forth. So I, I think that's.
Well, well, Vice Mayor, I, I hear what you're saying and I know you're trying to make people in the audience feel good about the process, as I want them to feel good about the process too. But we're not going to drag this on forever. If we're going to make a decision, we're going to get something done and, you know, not going to let this go five years or 10 years. We're going to, you know, we're going to do something, but.
Absolutely.
It will always involve public input.
Absolutely.
And we all agree on that. But we, you know, once we make a decision, we're going to get it done.
We're the can-do commission.
Exactly.
That's what we've been able with Commissioner Glassman, we've been able to get this thing done to this stage, so we got more work to do, but.
Exactly.
Exactly. So, but I just want to make sure that we are, you know, we'll continue to have public engagement.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Great. So I think that's, that's all I've got. I mean, I, I think it makes sense to bifurcate, I think it makes sense to go to 17th, I think it makes sense to say, hey, there's no predetermined solutions, it's, we're going to move forward design and evaluation as, as we're moving ahead. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. And there's a point I think that may need to be raised, but I'm going to wait till Commissioner Glassman speaks and then I'll speak.
You sure?
Yeah.
You might forget. Go ahead, say it now.
You might, it's such a good point, you might make.
Say it now. You sure you don't want to say it now? Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yes, I thank you for all of the work. This has been, I think, at least two and a half years, right, Ben? Two and a half years? So I also want to, I want to thank all of the stakeholders, I want to thank the commission, I want to thank Cordino, staff, everybody has put a lot of time into this. And I believe all of the work we've done is online, isn't it? I know Nancy questioned where she could find the information.
Yeah.
There is a, there was a La Solis Mobility Working Group page on the city's website, has minutes of every meeting, has video presentations from every meeting, it has every step of the way. If I'm, if I'm not right, is that, Ben, correct?
That's correct. If you go to the webpage and then you search for La Solis Mobility Project, it comes up. And Commissioner, to your point, the first meeting logged was May 4th of 2017.
And I believe that might have been in this chamber when we had a big open meeting and I forgot the name of the person who was in TAM at the time convened that meeting and that was when we had the entire city invited and then we, we brought it down to just stakeholders along the corridor and that's when we started to meet. So a lot of work since 2017, so I wanted to thank everyone for that. So I, too, Alan, have lots of questions about exactly how the process would play out for assessments, because I really want to understand how, how that plays versus how all of the other options play. By the way, I am also in favor of bifurcating this. I, I'm fine, there's obviously a lot more enthusiasm on the west corridor, so I'm fine with moving forward with that as quickly as possible and figuring that out. I certainly, if we eventually do though, assessments, I don't want them to have to basically pay more and I want to see those numbers too. I don't know how that's going to be impacted if we don't move forward on the east. But that being said, I also want to say that I'm getting text messages today, I'm hearing from people also east of the Cespiro Bridge. I know of about nine streets in the actual La Solis Isles that are in favor of moving forward, they want to see the improvement. So I need to do my work in terms of really gauging what that sentiment is from the Cespiro Bridge to the beach, because right now, I'm looking at the nine streets where we're doing the undergrounding now, actually, they're actually called the La Solis Isles. But those nine streets on the south side of La Solis, just east of the bridge, are telling me that they, they want this program to move forward. So I have to, I have to go back to all of these folks, I think I have to make sure that everybody understands all of the elements that are involved in the plan that the commission approved. We did approve that plan for the east portion, just as we did for the west portion. So I, I want to make sure that everyone understands all of the improvements, all of the changes, exactly what's there. But Alan, I'm going to need a lot more information in exactly how these, this assessment is going to play out, if that's the direction that the commission goes. Because, for instance, when the Gulf Ocean Mile was assessed with the improvements, was that in the mid-'90s? I'm not sure.
'95.
Ninety-five? Well, that's about mid-'90s. How does that play out? How did that play out? I want to know what that process was, see what they did there. I know that there are other areas where we've had assessments, Dolphin Isles, 33rd Avenue, all the condos along 33rd on A1A, and also west of 33rd Avenue were all assessed for the sidewalks, and the streetlights, and the benches, and the guardhouse, and everything else that was done. That was an assessment just for that neighborhood. So I want to know how that played out, that process. Also, I guess, the beach improvement district. Even though everyone uses the beach, those businesses have assessed themselves to also do improvements and maintain that portion where they are located. So I think we need to look at all of these other examples of how people assess themselves, and then how did that process play out, what led up to that process? So I just need to get more information to feel confident with that. But in the immediate, I'm just fine with moving forward as quickly as possible from the west. I definitely want to see that traffic study that has not happened yet. With regards to 16th, I think that's really very important for the folks for ingress and egress on the aisles, so I want to make sure that we do get that information. That's about where I am, Mayor.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mayor, can I just respond to the Galt assessment, too, that I think is...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
A little bit different. So when the Galt was assessed in ninety-five, and they did pay for 100% of the improvements, it was the road right in front of the condos. So, you know, this isn't on the aisles, it's the road connecting the aisles. So, I don't know, the road seems a little further away than directly in front of the property owners. So, just a thought.
Understood.
Well, but Dolphin Isles, when they assessed for that, I was commissioner at the time, and the whole neighborhood was assessed, even though they weren't necessarily right on 33rd.
Correct. And there was a lot of...
There was pushback.
There was a lot of pushback. I'll tell you why, because the condos along that corridor paid, they didn't do it like what's being recommended to us today proportionally. They did it by parcel. And there was a lot of pushback, because the condominium buildings, if you looked at the footprint that they occupy, they paid per unit, so it was just an astronomical amount that would come out of a rather small footprint versus someone that might have had a single-family home parcel. So there was some pushback, but everyone was assessed the same exact amount.
Right. It was around 800 or something like that, but it was just only 800, not 1,000.
Yeah, I think it was about 1,200, if I remember correctly, I think. But I can't remember exactly.
I think they could pay it over 10 years.
It was a one-time charge, and we're talking about a lot less money.
Correct. Well, it was just mostly sidewalk and lighting.
Yeah. And some intersection.
Yeah, some raised roads to street, you know, to Calm, 33rd Avenue. Right.
Any further comments?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any thoughts? Okay. So, all right, you know, I'm not sure where we are with regard to the aisles portion of this, and not that I'm looking to cherry pick, but, you know, the aisles portion of this is a huge undertaking, even though I think one thing that everyone can agree on is the crosswalks that are needed along that section of La Solis. So if we did anything there, it would be, in my opinion, we should at least do the crosswalks, because that has been something that we've been talking about for many, many years, and it is a dangerous pathway to try to cross when you're talking about La Solis Boulevard. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that. But with regard to what staff has recommended today, it, you know, it's a lot of money, and to expect all the neighbors along the aisles to, you know, be assessed for this, I think we need to take a step back and, you know, reevaluate it. With regard to the shops, I don't think there's as much pushback there. In fact, I think the stakeholders along La Solis Boulevard are eager to see that project move forward. And if we decide anything today, it should be to direct staff to move, take us to the next step, to try to determine where we're going to go with that. I know that the stakeholders along La Solis are eager to get that resolved. Yesterday, I had lunch at one of the restaurants, and almost killed myself trying to walk on the sidewalk, because it was like three feet wide, and it's really, it's really, you know, a very, it's not the kind of experience that we should expect people visiting our city or people who live in our city to have to have when trying to go to La Solis Boulevard, and, you know, we got to do better there. So Commissioner, Vice Mayor, this is your district. What recommendation do you have, at least with regard to the shops? What do you want staff to do going forward?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'd love for us to move forward with going from Andrews to 17th, with furthering the movement towards looking at, you know, further evaluation, design, and exploring funding options. And I think the good news is with the funding options is the assessment is just one of many funding options. We can have state, federal grants, in addition to city contribution as well. So I'd love to move forward with that, and then allow 17th East to, you know, defer to Commissioner Glassman on that process of time to evaluate and discuss.
What do you think Commissioner Glassman on Part II?
When you say Part II...
The east part.
On the east part, well...
East of 17th.
Right. Well, I still, I want to get more input, because I'm hearing different things from different people. But right now, I think that we are fine to just move forward with the west part in terms of design. I mean, I don't think it needs to be done. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, you don't need holistically east and west to move forward? Isn't there enough work just to go forward with design from Andrews to 17th?
That's correct, and that's one of the directions I was looking for, for the $2 million that's allocated for next year's, if it's...
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
All right, so let me just, so it seems to me that there's a lot more buy-in on the western portion of this concept for funding than there is on the eastern portion. So are we spending money for design for a portion that may never get funded versus the western portion, which there seems to be a lot more interest in the funding process, even if it includes an assessment, than I see in the eastern portion? I mean, I hate to throw good money after bad, if we're not going to go forward with anything on the eastern portion. See what I'm saying?
Yes, but right now, we're focusing on moving forward with the western portion, because the western portion seems to be ready to assess themselves.
That we're ready.
Right.
I mean, I get the, I mean, we get the sense of that.
We still don't know, and we haven't had this discussion, but any chance, Chris, for cert tax money from the county for any of this project? Federal government money? State government money?
Well, I think there's many things for us to look at. I'll let Ben articulate a couple of the things that we have already looked at. But no, this isn't just an assessment or general fund or nothing project.
Yeah, I think it'd be a combination of all different funding sources. I think one of the challenges we have right now is we don't have anything in design, and a lot of times, the grants that are ready to ward next-year project money require, you know, shovel-ready projects, and we're just not at that point.
Okay.
Right.
So the idea would just to create, get to that point where we then can, we become eligible for state and federal funding?
Right, and that's fine. With regards to the east, Mayor, again, I'll be very happy to go back and have conversations. I want to make sure that all of the residents from Sarsaprow to the beach know exactly what is in that east plan that we approved as a commission. I want to make sure everyone is aware of every element that's in that plan, and see, you know, what do people think about that? I want to find out if people, is it just the assessment that they're upset with, or would they be happy to see the project move forward if there was no assessment? So there are just some questions I want to see fleshed out, you know, a little bit more, and just to hear those opinions from everybody on that section.
All right, so the ask today from staff is to be able to go forward, to utilize the budgeted money, to be able to take us to the next step, do the engineering, do the traffic analysis, do what is necessary in order to make us a shovel-ready project. Do I have a consensus on the commission to do that?
Yes, is that, that's the west side that we're talking about?
Both sides.
Yep.
Both sides? Shovel-ready for both sides?
Yeah, east and west, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, if that's what you all want.
Yeah, okay. All right, there you go.
Just a point of clarification, the $2 million for next year is not going to be able to design the entire corridor.
No, no, we understand that.
So what we're going to, what I'm hearing is the $2 million is going to be used from the Sarsaprow Bridge west to Andrews, and we're going to use that as the initial design money for next year's budget.
Repeat that again, so everyone understands that.
The $2 million earmarked for next year's budget, if approved by commission, would be utilized to do the design from the Sarsaprow Bridge west to Andrews.
Okay. That's like 17th Avenue to Andrews.
Correct.
Yes.
Everybody knows the name of the bridge.
Yes. And then, Mayor, just to your concern about the crosswalks, I was able to work with Ben and city manager, we have money in the budget for the two crosswalks. And Ben's team is getting ready now to prepare all of that for public input, presentations, location, all of that. But we are moving forward with that, as he stated earlier, that's happening.
Understanding everything.
That's happening regardless of what we do or do not do on the east portion of the project. That's happening.
That's already programmed.
Not contrary to what some people think. I do listen and understand. I don't, you might want to tell your husband if you get a chance when you go home. But I do listen and understand, and we do have money in the budget for the crosswalks. So that will be happening regardless, yes.
Okay, great. All right.
And then...
Yeah, just to clarify, so Ben, when this is shovel-ready, we will be able to apply for the federal funding like we did on Breakers, to get the $5 million?
So I think staff will start researching, start working on things, but I know that recently, with a lot of the infrastructure bills and the transportation bills...
Right.
They wanted shovel-ready projects, so that they could see kind of an immediate turnaround, not something that would be done in five or 10 years.
Yeah, but to answer her question...
So it has to be shovel-ready first?
How much closer will this take us, at least on the western portion, to become a shovel-ready project?
Once we get through design, then it would be to that point, and I have to go out to the market and figure out what that timeline looks like. I believe Coradino said it was about 18 months.
Okay.
But I can double-check that and bring that information back to the commission.
Okay, great.
All right, so hopefully you can get that, like you did at Breakers.
Okay, great.
And Ben, a couple of, the bike lanes that were referenced, you know, going east to 711, I'm assuming part of the evaluation design is assessing that and evaluating what's best and so forth? Is that part of the analysis?
Yeah, the vision plan incorporated all of those conversations, and has a final recommendation.
Okay, so it'll be part of the process. Then, the only other thing, and Commissioner Glassman, maybe, I didn't quite understand, but the blind spots on the bridges, or is that...
That was something, that goes way before this commission.
Okay.
There were bridges that were redone on the aisles way before us.
Yeah.
And there were some engineering mistakes, and I don't know, really know why it wasn't taken care of at the time. I think we have looked at maybe ways to deal with that, but Ben, what do you think in terms of, is there really anything that we can do? That was also done with the state involved.
Okay.
There was a lot involved there, but I don't have a total history of why that was screwed up the way it was, and why it was never rectified.
Yeah, Commissioner, I can look into it. It was before my time here, but I understand that the roadway was an F-dot roadway at that time. They did some road raising, they redid the bridges, and the elevations just weren't inept with each other. So I've talked with Alan Dodd a few times about it, and if you look at the vision plan for the eastern corridor, you'll look and see the aisles has a substantial dollar figure associated with it because of a lot of those type of remedies. So it does incorporate raising the road, it does incorporate new stormwater, new drainage, new pipes, things of that magnitude, and so that's why the aisles portion is such a large figure in the plan.
Do you remember offhand in the plan that we did approve, what we were actually doing to address the sightlines from those bridges, to remedy that? Do you remember exactly what was in that plan?
I don't recall from memory, but I can do the researching back to you.
Okay, because that's going to be important, because there really are elements in the eastern portion, Mayor, that I think are very beneficial. I know that we're hearing today from folks that don't like it, but I believe, if you remember correctly, Vice Mayor, we scaled way back on the eastern portion. Remember, one gentleman mentioned the overhead walkway and all, we got rid of that, we got rid of the big parks at all of the different aisle entrances. There was a lot of change that happened, Mayor, that happened on the eastern portion. It's actually what was approved by this commission, it was a very scaled-down version of what originally was proposed by Coradino, and that was because there was more of a consensus, rather than people getting exactly what they wanted versus other people not getting anything they wanted, or, you know, there was a, I think, in my opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a compromise that was done to come up with the eastern plan that this commission actually did approve. And that's why I want to revisit some of those elements, including what Ben and I just talked about, in terms of the sightlines on those bridges, because there are some things there that are good. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
So, just help me clarify something. The bike lanes, we moved forward, are they coming out? Because I'm hearing this group, where they say they didn't want bike lanes, but they have them. So my understanding, when we get bike lanes based on the source of funds, we can't remove them, because they're part of the same streets and all the other things that connect neighborhoods, and if you don't keep the bike lanes, you take the meetings out that you put in during that time to gather those grants, I think you got to pay the money back. I just want clarity on what hap, are we taking the bike lanes out? And if so, what's the repercussions?
Well, you know, that's a good question, and Ben, if you can come to the podium again, but let me tell you something.
I'd be wrong.
When the bike lanes went in, and that was a few years back, I heard from the neighbors who hated the bike lanes because it interfered with their, with the traffic patterns that they were used to following, but then I listened to the bikers who loved the bike lanes...
Right.
Because they finally had a pathway to get to the aisles without having to risk their life trying to go either on the sidewalk or in the roadway. So I just think it was not the most well-conceived design, but I still think bike lanes are going to be required if we're going to get federal funding. So you're correct.
Okay.
The MPO will not give us money unless we have bike lanes. That's from my information, when I, every time we sit in those MPO meetings, that's what they insist on. So maybe they just weren't designed right, maybe the road can be redesigned, but that isn't, are we correct in assuming that bike lanes may be required if we're going to get federal funding?
So each character area had different recommendations at the end. Some had bike lanes in the whole time, and they were modified at the end and removed. Some of them kept them the whole time, and some of them opposed them the whole time. So what I think it would be best to do is, if I could work the city manager, we can draft up a commission memo that highlights some of the vision plan takeaways from last year, just to refresh the commission, and then also memorialize what our next steps will be, and that way, everyone's on a unified platform.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to business two. Discussion of future development of Lockhart Park.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. So I've got that one this afternoon, Mayor. And spoiler alert, this is going to be more of an update from the last meeting as opposed to us getting to any final conclusion today. But if you read the commission agenda memo, I sort of anticipated that, and even put that in the cam, that we would likely talk about it today, and then need to follow back up on July the 5th. Since the last time we had this item on the conference agenda, I did request a meeting with Inter Miami. I did meet with Jose Moss and Pablo Alvarez, and we sat down and looked at a conceptual rendering that they had done through their architect, that they proffered as an example of what would be compliant with the comprehensive agreement. We talked about that a little bit, made some changes to it, and asked that some changes be made to it to beef it up a little bit. It was a little less than appealing in its first pass. It got more appealing in its second pass. And then just last weekend, we ended up confirming with each other that, in fact, the fields that would be provided to the city as recreation fields would be constructed as artificial surface as opposed to natural grass. And so the original plan had natural grass on it. We've now moved to the point of that being artificial turf. The image that I've seen does in fact capture a dog park and walking trails and maintenance shed and open fields for the public, as well as place bases in the form of fields. All of the things that were articulated in the comprehensive agreement were depicted in this conceptual rendering. Where we are right now is after those discussions of last week and then that continued over the weekend, they had gone and had an estimation of value done on the first plan that they presented. And after we, my term not theirs, beefed it up and came to the conclusion that in fact it was artificial surface as opposed to natural grass. They have taken that conceptual rendering and sent it back to the estimator of value, and that's the number that we're waiting on at this point. I would expect that I'll see something this week. That was usually, it was a quick process the last time they did it. And then I hope to meet back with them and come to a place that I can bring a recommendation to you all of what the value of those improvements are, and then I'll need some direction as to how you all want to proceed from there. But I think we've got to get the number right first so that we have a baseline that we're all in agreement on. And then if I can't get it there, then I'm just going to have to ask them to come interact with you at a public meeting and recognize that single-handedly I haven't been able to negotiate to something that the commission is satisfied with. And then you all will hopefully help me out in that regard. I've not lost hope yet, we've had good conversations, it's going in the right direction. There's not been any opposition to the city raising suggestions where we think that they may have stopped short on what they were presenting to the city, there hasn't been any objection to that, in fact, there's been a quick consent. So that's an interim update from the last time we were together, I simply don't have a new number to even talk about tonight. But that's why the cam indicated that we would do this again on July the 5th.
But what's the concept? I mean, we're still looking at the exhibit to the original comprehensive agreement. What's the actual concept site plan that we're looking to price?
It looks very similar to what you see as Exhibit 4.
Right.
It just removes from Exhibit 4 with those things that we've always said we were going to pay for, which was a community center in the middle of it and a splash pad. Those things are not depicted on what was sent to the pricing group, I don't even know what you call them. So that's why I'm being a little bit vague in how I refer to them. But it generally, if you were to now hold them side by side, and I don't have a copy to show you because it went to, I've actually only seen it on my phone, but it would look very similar to what you see now as Exhibit 4 in the comprehensive agreement. We did work our way to that, minus those couple of subtractions. Once we get there, so you said, so what's the path forward? So I think we're going to have to either pick one of a couple of different paths forward and see what they're agreeable to. The first thing I would need to test with you all, and maybe you can digest this and be ready to give me some feedback, is how long we would consent to them continuing to park on the south part of the site. What I learned when I was with them last week is that there are some that would suggest they can get to Miami as early as 2025, although I think the Commissioner Glassman just did what Jose did when that was brought up inside. I'm not so sure that everything would have to be perfect for that to happen. So probably the real year is 2026. As you know, when the games are happening up there and they have a significant crowd, it's about 17 games a year plus some of the special events that they're hosting. They use the south part of the site, we've consented to it being used for parking. If they didn't have access to it, they would have to have parking in a different place. And that could come in the form of parking agreements with Calvary Chapel or the Spectrum Building or any of another host of buildings that are up there in the proximity to the stadium. Or we could consent to a multi-year parking deal that would have some significant financial impact to it, to us, to allow them to continue to park on that south parcel until they move and go to Miami and then they wouldn't need it anymore. My concern, and I've articulated this to anybody who's asked, is that if we all of a sudden have a full stadium and the parking is a mess, that's going to blow back on them as much as it would likely blow back on us because it's our uniform to people that are out there helping park people and moving traffic around. So there is a, you know, we need to look that straight in the face and be honest with ourselves. We're going to have a parking issue there until the team leaves and goes to Miami on a full-time basis and the crowds that show up there at the stadium are somewhat smaller. It would be the one-off event in the future as opposed to the 17 times a year event. We're going to see what happens with a capacity crowd most likely on July 19th when Barcelona comes to town. So we'll have an idea of what 18,000 people packed gill-to-gill in that stadium looks like from a parking perspective. So that's the first thing I'm going to come and probably ask you is how long are you willing to allow that to continue? Two is, I will then come to you with either a recommendation that, or based upon how you answer that, then I would come with a proposal to say, do you want us to be in the park building business? Do we want to talk with Inter Miami about building the park? And then how do we want to influence the outcome by adding things to the plan? And I consistently, and I think they're good comments, but consistently hear that we want to take what they are obligated to do, and we do want to add the community center to it, and we do want to add an esports component, we do want to add a world-class skate park. And there's things we want to add to their base design. I think it becomes easier to add those things to the base design once we've agreed upon the base design, and so that's.
But that's the first question, what is the base design?
Yeah, so it models the concept that's in Exhibit 4, but it's articulated more in words than it is in pictures in the comprehensive agreement. There's two sections in the comp agreement that says they have to do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And you could do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 and make it look 100 different ways on a concept rendering. But they have taken and very closely resembled what was included in the comprehensive agreement as illustrative, of course. So, you know, it was not included that it was intended to be exactly as depicted, but close to or an illustration of.
Well, I have to be honest with you, I'm like totally confused right now.
I'm sorry.
Can I give a couple, can I give a couple thoughts to help make things clear?
I mean, we're talking about a design that's not here, we're talking about things that we're going to add that we don't know, and we're talking about, you know, it's just, and you're asking us to wait four or five years till they build their other stadium before we figure out what to do with parking?
Won't be here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think, let's start from the beginning. We need to see what the base design is, what they're contemplating, what we're contemplating, and come to some agreement as to what that base design is.
Agreed.
Then, so I don't think we're, I don't really think this item should be even discussed today until we know that. But I do know that, I do know the commissioner wants to say something, and just give me one second. Once we know what the base design is, then we can start incorporating what we want, the components we want to include, all right? And see where we're going to get funding. As far as parking is concerned, you know, that's been an issue from day one, they're using all this area for their parking. We probably should have included a parking structure from day one because that would have helped us pay for it all this time. Because once they move to their new stadium and they only use this for practice and for exhibition games, the parking structure is not going to be utilized as much, right?
Correct.
Unless they bring in another team, which they've been talking about, or teams. So, but I don't want that issue, the parking issue, to prevent us from moving forward on activating and constructing, you know, these other 20 acres. We need to move forward on that, right? We can't just sit around and wait. So with that in mind, whether it be you or Greg, you know, we need to figure out, you know, next steps. And the first step is knowing what the base design is going to be, right?
Agreed.
Well, we do know what the base is going to be, it's the.
I don't see it, where?
Well, it's on page 43 of the.
No, I'm on 43, but this is not what he's saying is the base design.
Yeah, it is the base design, it's what we voted on in July, it's Exhibit 4, what we voted on July three years ago.
Correct.
That's what we voted on, but I think there've been.
Yeah, obviously, well, it does need to go to the next design level, and it never has. And I suggest, we just need to let them build what they're required to build, and then you all will move forward, probably the next commission, and decide what other elements you want to put on it. Do you want the esports? Do you want the skate park? You'll decide that, but just, the three-year deadline is coming up, they need to, we need to move forward and build the park. They can just build exactly what they said they contractually were going to build. We will come back later once they design, bid, build, get everything in place. It shouldn't take that long. I mean, they built the stadium, how long did it take to build the stadium?
Two weeks.
Six months?
Yeah, so you're okay, so you're okay with this base design right here? And the portions that say City of Fort Lauderdale, that's something that we'll reserve for ourselves to do, the skate park and to do.
You all decide that later, you know, decide it without me, I will tell you the community is excited about the skate park, the community is excited about possibly esports, but, you know, hopefully you can continue on and Greg can continue on. But I think right now, we just need to let them move forward and build what they said they would do contractually because the deadline's coming up in July, when they were supposed to build it by. And so now at least let's start it by that time. You know, parking, parking was an issue from day one. And, you know, I remember when this went to P&amp;Z, you know, parking was the issue. And I know my appointee actually did not approve their plan because he did not see the parking agreements, and so he didn't want to move this forward. And at the time, I was kind of actually upset that he didn't vote to move it forward. And now looking back, I thought, you know what, I really, I should have listened to him a little bit more. He actually knew what he was talking about, and I actually called him and apologized for it because he asked for the parking agreements and he was never shown any parking agreements. I don't know what the parking agreements are, we've never seen them, P&amp;Z never saw them. So we were told they exist, so I'm glad they exist, so please use them. So what I recommend is move forward, build everything they said they were going to build. When it's all done, let the dust settle, and then the next commission can come in and figure out what you want to do. You do have park bond money to do it. So you can use the park bond money for a splash pad if you want it, maybe you choose not to. You know, an esports arena, you might be able to do, you know, a solicited P3 for it, maybe you don't have to pay for anything. The skate park, I don't think it's over $3 million, I've heard that number a few times. So I think in terms of parking, we've been gracious enough for three years, they've been paying for parking. I don't even know where the money is that they've paid us for parking, you know, it's not helping me play at a park in my district at all. So I don't know where that money went. You know, I see, once again, I see a fence up and some tumbleweeds when I walk by. So they can use their own parking agreement, they can execute it, I should say, and they can start building the park just exactly like we all agreed to.
Anyone else have any comments on that? I mean, I don't disagree with you, I mean, I think.
Oh, I'm fine with that. But Chris, where do, do you know, the parking agreement is what, Cavalry Chapel, who else?
Well, there's, I've seen a map at one point where there's parking lots that surround, so it requires an agreement. So just because those parking lots exist doesn't mean they have automatic access to them, they'd have to negotiate an agreement with each individual business that would have a parking lot that was proximity enough and sizable enough that it made sense. Those are just two I rattled off the top of my head, but there's many parking lots surrounding the stadium.
So when people go, let's just say, and I'm full agreement, exactly what you said, let's just get it done. The people want to go there to the park, and they park where?
There is some parking that's depicted on the site itself for park use.
Okay, how many spaces?
Mostly park in our acres of dirt.
Yeah.
In our, no, I mean when we finish the park.
Well, when we finish the park, there's going to be very little area for parking.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
They're going to have to bus them in, they're going to have to charlie them in.
A family wants to go to the park when the park is finished, where do they park?
Sea on diagram, sea on diagram, Exhibit 4, that's, the paved area is all that will be available.
How many spaces is that?
It's not enough, you're right, Steve, they have to park off-site.
Okay, are families used to parking off-site to go to a park?
Yes, many football games, I've, yes.
Just to go to the park?
Robert, I know you have more experience with this, probably down in Miami.
Okay.
Yes, it happens all over our country that people have to take a shuttle, you know.
To go to a park, okay.
To go to a game, a football game.
No, I'm not talking about a game.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'm talking about if a family wants to just go to the park that we're going to.
No, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted your question.
No, 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 I don't mean the game.
There will be parking for the park, on the park side, you are correct. And when they modeled it out, when I was working with AECOM and EDSA originally, they modeled out parking. And there'll probably be even more parking because they may hold some space for.
Do we know how many spaces roughly just for the park area?
It was a lot, but it was based on, and I know AECOM's not here, I mean, it was based on what the needs are per code for this amount of space. So yes, the parking is totally separate
Okay.
from the football game parking.
Oh, I understand that. So Chris, you can wrap this up with us on the 5th and then give us the latest and greatest. And also, just a question, what date in July does the comprehensive agreement expire?
It's July 17th or July 18th.
So do we have to amend it, or?
We do at some point, depending on where we land. If we're going to go ahead and have them just build what they're required to build, then we can just do an addendum, just extending that timeframe. So it'll be simple enough.
Can we also, I know I've asked this a few times over the past three years. I know we talked about when we were, when we are going to amend the comprehensive agreement about naming the entire 64 acres Lockhart Park, can we include that in the amendment?
As long as both parties agree.
I thought we couldn't do that.
No, we can.
I'm not.
Oh, okay, I know, you're the.
I thought in that conversation, it was something that we can, leaving our rights away.
No.
Don't say no, I'm trying to understand it so I can help.
Okay, I thought it was just the stadiums, but go ahead.
It was my understanding that we could not name the whole site, so can someone help me legally?
You can, you can name the whole site, and they had actually agreed to it verbally. The restrictions on naming rights dealt mostly with the stadium and the venue itself.
So we can name the perimeter?
And they had agreed to it as to what signage and all that, I don't know that we.
But it was a very limited signage piece. Stephanie, can you, I mean, I just want to know what I'm agreeing to.
Right, so you're not going to have.
I would love to see Lockhart named, like I said, day one, many, many years ago, I wanted Lockhart named to stay relevant in this deal, but it somehow got caught up in the weeds and now we're coming back to do it. But I want to understand what our steps are to make that happen, and can we do it fully the way that Commissioner Maritza is expressing it? Or is it just going to be a sign in the front of this large parcel that says Lockhart Family?
Right, you're not going to have Lockhart Park emblazoned near where the stadium is?
No, it'll be like probably on our side, welcome to Lockhart Park.
That's what I'm saying.
But it'll still be commemorated and named.
That's different, but the way you started out was like.
Well, I meant like name, like if Google Map would say, here's Lockhart Park, maybe Google Maps says, here's, you know, AutoNation Stadium. I think somehow.
I don't think Google Maps is going to usurp that when you got the big economic engine which is the.
And I don't want to take away that from them, I'm not suggesting.
I'm on your side, I'm just trying to get clarification as to what's going to happen.
Commissioner, let me read you from the agreement.
Go ahead.
It says, "At all times during the term of this comprehensive agreement, Miami Beckham has the sole and absolute right upon prior written notice to the city, but without consent from the city, to designate the name of any portion of the Inter Miami site, including the stadium, providing such name shall not be in bad taste or offensive to the city's image or in the reasonable opinion of the city commission is a source of embarrassment to the city of Fort Lauderdale." So they have a right to name their site, their stadium, what they want, which is Drive Pink Stadium.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, and that's cool, but the entire area, I don't see how we're precluded from calling it Lockhart Park.
I think it would be like you're coming to AutoNation's inner pink, Drive Pink Stadium at Lockhart Park.
Right, right.
And they may not even say at Lockhart Park, but at least we'd have it.
I don't think it takes away from anything that.
One more thing I wanted to bring up, so, and maybe we can use park bond money to pay for this. So the high school football stadium side, you know, the one that they built for us originally so Stranahan, Fort Lauderdale High School could play, it needs a little bit more stuff. Maybe more seating, maybe a press box. I mean, Inter Miami did a great job of building a good start, a good football space for us. But I think the schools and the community have said we kind of need a little bit more, and I'm not asking Inter Miami to pay for it. I'd be happy to have us pay for it using our park bond money if we can, but it needs more. It needs more seating and it needs a press box, so is that something, can we use park bond money to do that? I just want to make it happen.
I would need a little bit more details to be able to answer that, but.
I know maybe.
Generally, you probably could, but.
Alan, I think it's this, if that's truly our high school stadium and we had that intent, and we're now doing the park piece to it, we're just talking about putting better amenities to accommodate a high school football. Right now, you really can't accommodate a high school football game, especially when those two schools bring their bands. There's not enough seating, the bands take up.
We need more bleachers, we need more bleachers.
Bleachers, and then I think the, yeah, a press box, press boxes needed. That would, you know, carry.
And if they would.
VIP seating.
If they would allow us to pay for it and build it, I'm totally fine with that. If they would just kind of allow us to go in and beef it up a little bit so that it meets the needs. Hey Stephanie, do you have any update on that? I know you've been talking with maybe the school board.
I can, so, good afternoon, Stephanie Tufaker, on behalf of Miami Beckham United. Let me first address the Lockhart Park. We had long ago consented to calling the entire site Lockhart Park, to calling it AutoNation Stadium at Lockhart Park. That was something that we had agreed to, I thought we had done it in writing, and if we didn't, I certainly have the authority to agree to that. We think it's a great idea as well, and in fact, we had worked with a group to commission a brass plaque that was to be placed on the Inter Miami side, so when you walk into the stadium, it would say, welcome to Lockhart Park. So we agree, we think that's a great idea. As it relates to the high school stadiums, the high school stadium, we had had an onsite meeting with the Broward County School Board and some other folks, actually, the schools were all represented, a lot of the parents came. And because we had heard that there is an issue with the bands in particular, that there's just not enough seating for when they bring their bands because they just, they have a lot of spirit, and it's a very, very popular site to use. And so we priced out the possibility of adding some of those uses, adding additional bleachers, a press box and things like that. It was in the millions, it was very, very expensive. It was something that I think Inter Miami thought, well, this has been, you know, we, originally when we had done, in fact, the high school stadium's not in the picture that you're looking at that is in the comprehensive agreement because it's not something that was ever contemplated, and it was something that we did for the community in conjunction with the commission and with the school board, that we took one of the pitch fields away from the training field and gave that back to the community. and gave that back to the community. And, you know, very happy that we did it. It's been, it's been incredible, it's been, it's been used a lot. But I don't think adding multiple millions of dollars on top of it was something that was originally contemplated. So I think, you know, if we could continue to work with, with Chris and Greg and staff over the next couple of weeks and try to refine this, we just, we tried. We went to Miami, we had meetings in Miami and we, we got close. But I am going to tell you, I just don't, that's why I didn't stand up earlier. I just don't have anything to add to that discussion because I think we're just not quite there.
Do you think they would allow us to do it if we were able to use park bond money? Is it, is it a problem with the money or is it a problem?
It's, it's, it's finding the space and just the additional funds.
I mean, if we stayed.
I think, I mean, of course, it's not something that I can make that decision standing here, but I think we would be very pleased to work with the city on that.
I don't know how you all feel, Commissioner, with that idea? I mean, it's our only, you know, Stranahan.
I like the idea and I just want to help both of you because I think my presence there several times, the addition to the stands is not a big issue of finding space, it wouldn't.
It's both, it's both. It's, it's, it's the space, it's possibly having to move what's there to accommodate some additional room, so.
But it wouldn't go over into the practice field?
No, 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 it wouldn't take additional room from the practice field.
Well, I know you'd have to reconfigure everything, yeah.
It'd have to be, everything would have to be reconfigured. It's not as easy as saying, because we looked at it, it's not as easy as saying, you know, we can just buy an additional, you know, grandstand and just plop it on next to it. It's not that easy. That's, I think that's what caused the angst because when I, when I did the onsite meeting with the school board and the parents and the, and we had a lot of the students there and we were all trying to find a way to make this work and it just became really unwieldy. I think if the will is there, I know that they tried to do it, so I can't imagine why that would have changed. It was just something that I think we would need to coordinate with the city and I believe would be happy to do it.
How do you all feel?
Heather, I think using park bond for that would be great. I'd happily support you.
Yeah, just to make sure, I mean, it's all of our schools, it's not even Fort Lauderdale and Stranahan, it's not even in my district, but I think it's a nice benefit for our city for the future to have what they need going forward. So maybe Alan, if we're legally allowed to use our park bond?
I, I have to look at it.
You could figure that part out?
Are they programmed, do they program that park for, that section for anything else?
No, it's really just used for the community.
We'll have to look and, probably yes, we'll look.
All right.
Okay.
Three people have signed up to speak, so.
By the way, Mayor, I just want to make sure, are we, we're going to continue and hopefully finalize this on the 5th? Is that the plan?
I'm hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we'll have at least some staff consensus with what to show as, as the baseline so that you have a comparison in your hand as to how it compares with Exhibit 4 of the comprehensive agreement. And then we'll have to talk about how we overlay other stuff on. I want to get to an agreed upon plan and say, this is, this is the park. And then we all say, this is the park and then we can build then from there.
I do think we need to see that on the 5th, that comparison. But also, should Inter Miami be here on the 5th and speak to us personally? I mean, can they come on the 5th?
We can certainly ask.
I mean, I think that's important that they're here.
I think if we're making decisions, they need to be here. Is Jose taking over for Jorge?
No.
No, I think we just.
Jorge was traveling. I mean, they own, they own the team together, but Jorge was traveling.
I called one day and said I needed a meeting tomorrow, so they accommodated that. But I think I got the, I got Jose who was in town when George was not.
I know they're both equally qualified, but.
I think it'd be great if they could be here on the 5th and we can just have a discussion.
It is 4th of July, just kidding, I'm just kidding.
It's the 5th of July.
It is the 4th of July weekend, a lot of people are traveling.
Why are we meeting on the?
We've had three shots. We had two weeks ago today and two weeks from now. So at one of those shots, we need, they could zoom in. I'll, we'll let them zoom in from wherever in the world they may be.
Well, I don't know, look, they have a representative, they don't necessarily have to personally be.
I know, but Stephanie needs to be able to make decisions, just like this question we just asked. Can we at least build it if, if we pay for it? I mean, we need to, we need to know these things.
Well, what's the next step? The next step was to get a defined plan and to get some sort of cost analysis. I mean, that's really the next step.
Correct.
Are we going to get that in two weeks? I don't know.
I hope to have it later this week. It was pretty quick before, so.
Okay, if we can get that, if we get that by the next meeting, then I think we've.
We'll certainly try.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. We have three people have signed up to speak. We have Mary Furtig followed by Marilyn Maman, followed by Nancy Thomas.
I was coming today to specifically talk about the high school stadium. When I spoke last September, Mike Ridley followed me out. We got into a conversation about this. We had, in the course of the comments in September of last year, talked about the need for more bleachers. And so he followed me out and that led to the setting up of a meeting with Stranahan, Lauderdale representatives from the various high schools, students, parents, coaches and so forth. And I think I actually came here that night, I was speaking under public speakers and told you that they were offering to look at this and see what they could do. I have a series of emails over three months with the, between myself and with them and with Sean Sarah.
Who's them, who is the them?
Uh, Inter Miami.
But who's specific?
I'm happy to share my emails with you.
I don't want to share the, but who was the person that you were speaking?
Well, I spoke with, mostly with Mike Ridley emailing back and forth. But the night that we went to the field, we had various other representatives from Inter Miami there.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know what the cost of bleachers is, but that and the press box have been the conversation. And suddenly after that, after about three months, I never heard another thing. I know Mike got sick, he had COVID, he couldn't come. The meeting we had was canceled and I never heard anything else. So this is news to me that it was going to cost millions of dollars for the bleachers. But I would hope, because from my perspective as a community person, one of the things that we talked about was being able to use the stadium for major, well particularly, it was in the contract, I thought, for the Soul Bowl that it was going to be held there. I don't know that that has happened. But then also for homecoming for the various high schools because they have a larger crowd. Just now for a regular game, they don't have seating, not only not for their band, but for the, for, as one of the high school students said to me, our fans. Our fans can't watch us because, and you know, I think that is so important. I can remember being a high school student and going to Lockhart Stadium. And I, I hope if one thing comes out of this, that we provide enough seating that it's a viable stadium for our children to play in and that we also get those games that we had hoped to have, homecoming, Soul Bowl and so forth in the large stadium. Just on a note, I was up there last weekend. I have pictures from a year ago, it looks very much the same. I understand the parking issue, but I have to believe that we could pave that, I mean pave, sorry. Put grass on that property and park on the grass so that it doesn't look horrible. The property across the street on the south side of Commercial is so beautiful and then you see that field, you know, beautiful stadium, beautiful high school field and then just a field of dirt and rocks. And I just have to feel that we could do better than that. Thank you.
Well, before you leave, Mary, is there any way you can connect with Stephanie Toothacre and compare notes as to what you were, what was represented to you so that we don't lose, we don't lose that conversation about they are wanting to augment the number of bleachers?
You know, I'll take as much responsibility as Inter Miami. I was, I was involved in the conversation with them and with the various athletic directors, coaches and Sean Sarah. Sean's out of the country and so I, we have talked briefly, but I don't want to represent anything on his behalf because I don't work for the school board, as you know. And they're only so happy I don't. But I do, I do want to, I don't know what happened to the conversation. So I'll take full responsibility for having let it go and just hope, Stephanie, that we can pick it back up because we, we made this commitment. I've heard you all say to me, you got your high school stadium. Though I do want to go on the record as saying that I do not play football and I do have strong feelings about it, so we'll talk about that later. But I, I do feel that we made a representation to the community that we were going to have this as a venue for our high schools. And I think it's really important to make sure if it's our venue, it's as good as anything else in anybody else's city.
Okay, so if you can connect with her.
I will connect with Stephanie.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question, but so, and you might help, you might know the answer, Commissioner. So when the stadium was planned on the site, who determined the number of seats? Who determined the, how the crowds were going to be accommodated? How was all of that established and planned?
I was not involved in that part and it's, I'm sorry to report back, but you're right.
Stephanie or Mary, who decided, who, when we knew we were doing the stadium, didn't anyone come up with a plan that said we need X amount of room or we need X amount of seats or we need to accommodate the band and the fans? And was it just built without any input at all?
My first notice, and that's a good question, because the first time I knew, people just call me because, I don't know why, they just call me in. So even kids will call me and say, could you help out? We don't, we can't, you know, we can't seat our families or fans or whatever at the stadium. So that's how I became aware of it. I did speak with Stephanie about it.
No, but I mean, even before that, way before that.
I know, I don't know, I don't know.
So as it was being discussed early on, there was a long discussion that went into, is this the opportunity with this field to save some of the former Lockhart site? So we went through this discussion where the bleachers in good enough condition that we could preserve a piece of history and install those at the new community field. It turned out that those weren't available. And I'm not exactly sure who made the recommendation for the number of, of seats at this community field, but I want to say there's like 5,000 out there. And it certainly can be added to, I don't think that there's any issue with that. And we've had those discussions. But that's my recollection of how the bleacher discussion happened is at first it was going to be a historic preservation opportunity and then it turned into just having seating for people.
Well, I think the conversation about building a high school football stadium came from the idea that we were tearing down our previous high school football stadium and the community did not want to lose that. So Inter Miami said, well, so you don't have to lose your previous high school football stadium. We'll build you one over here on one of these fields. And so that was a great compromise. But I think then we weren't involved, Steve, in really what it looks like. And now in hindsight, yes, maybe I should have been more involved in what it looks like. I don't think there are 5,000 seats, I can't imagine. I've been out there.
There are not 5,000.
5,000 seats.
Yeah, I mean, maybe a thousand at the most. I mean, there's just some bleachers, 500?
Yeah.
Heather, to watch, go through and watch all the tapes of what we, of the conversations that were had at commission meetings. But, you know, I certainly was under the impression and I think, I felt like you all were under the impression that we were going to have a high school, a stadium for our high school games, that it would not be the big stadium because of the soccer schedule.
Right.
That that would be saved for Soul Bowl and you were going to try to get, what do you call it? Homecoming there if you could.
We're supposed to have four events a year, which we're still planning.
We are where we are today, so I would just say, they had offered last year to meet with us and see if we could do something. And so if anybody dropped a ball, I'm just going to say it was probably me.
Well, Mayor, you're a volunteer.
So maybe we can just get the conversation.
Can we do a sign blame, we're just trying to pick up the pieces where we left off?
Yeah, I'll happily jump in here. So advocating for a high school stadium was something that I was very passionate about from the beginning because Stranahan High School in my district and Fort Lauderdale High School did not have, do not have stadiums. And so, Mary, you'll probably remember this, but we convened a meeting with the school board, yourself, Inter Miami, to talk about this and talk about the option.
Don't waste your breath talking to the school board about getting funding from them in order to enhance the stadium.
So, hold on, okay, hold on.
They're still, they're still squeezing money out of us for their little parks.
Hold on. We, we were not, the idea was let's talk together to partner with Inter Miami to see what might be possible. And the school board with Sean was great and we, and Inter Miami was phenomenal in supporting this idea to build a high school stadium, not just for football, but for other uses as well, which they did and which has been fantastic asset to the community. Can it be improved? Absolutely. And I think that can be up to us as a city as to take on that improvement. Inter Miami was a fantastic partner in building this stadium for high school use and it has been used very well. Additionally, in our conversations, the discussion was, can the big stadium be used for bigger events? My recollection is there was a, a promise of up to four events or something like that that could be used at the big stadium. I don't know how many of those have been availed of the big stadium, but I think we've had a great partnership and we can keep, keep improving on what we've been doing.
Agreed.
So anyways, we're not, I think we just need to try to come up some money to enhance it, to how we want it to be enhanced.
Absolutely.
We did not give them any criteria when we said, build the high school football stadium. We said, just please build it.
Correct.
And so maybe we all dropped a ball at the very beginning when we didn't clearly communicate what we thought looked like a high school football stadium, but now we know and so now we can go back and fix it. And I think if we can use the park bond money, we, you know, we can do so.
Can I just add one thing about?
Sure. Can you speak close, more closely into the microphone?
What?
More, speak more closely into the microphone.
Oh, thank you, yes. I just want to say that, you know, stadiums aren't guaranteed by the school board. I've watched this in many communities, communities come up. But for our community forever, when I was at Fort Lauderdale High, which was forever ago, that we played at Lockhart Stadium and the city always had that. And same thing for Stranahan and that's why we fought so hard with this to try to get our teams there because truthfully, until the city made the move for Schlitterbaum, Schlitterbaum, whatever, Water Parks, whatever, that was our stadium. And in addition, a number of other game, community games were played there. So that was the goal. I think Inter Miami tried, you know, worked with us. I'm sure they intend to keep working with us and so I'm just going to leave it that I'll call Stephanie and maybe she has more to say.
Okay, great.
If we can just get that update in two weeks though, between legal on our side and Inter Miami on their side, so we can wrap that up too.
Marilyn?
Thank you, this is one I signed up for. I don't like soccer, I don't care about soccer. I don't have children, I don't worry about the stadium, I don't care if there's bleachers. Mary has got that covered. I'm here today speaking about parks and comprehensive agreements, okay? The, this has been a very good and interesting discussion and it's always good to keep the lines of communication open and keep.
By the way, Marilyn, we can see you, so it's best that you speak close to the edge of the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah, we can see you though.
Okay. So, I mean, this has been a very good discussion and it's always important for, to keep the lines of communication open and keep continuing to work with them to, to come to a resolution. But according to Article 10, 10.01, Miami Beckman is about to default in their comprehensive agreement obligations. That's a default. And then we are being very generous with them to continue working with them to find a solution to get them out of their potential default. But the comprehensive agreement is what it says it is, they are in default. So the ball is really in our court. They have to come to us and they have to show how they are going to get themselves out of this potential default. And so I agree with, I think is the consensus that's developing here is just build what you're required to build. We told you what you were going to build, you agreed to what you were going to build and if they come up even close to what the original agreement was, let's just get it done and let's worry about these other things later. Park bonds, skittle balls, whatever you're going to do, do it later. Get what was required in the comprehensive agreement. That's my opinion. That's my opinion. And I also think that what you should do is, you should put a P on it. You should zone that portion of the property that will be developed as a park as a park. I proposed our discussion of just a few weeks ago, when we talked about the fact that many of the parks, and we've done the research, 55 of the parks that are listed in the Parks Department inventory, 55 are zoned parks, and the other 100, of the other 102, they're not. They're zoned all kinds of things. This particular piece of property is zoned for, I forget what, but it's certainly not zoned park. It's a commercial something or other. So once you get the agreement to do the park portion, I suggest that you just zone it as a park. And the consequence of that is that any other use of that park portion of the site, according to the charter, would require a unanimous vote of the entire commission to do any leasing, sale, licensing, yada, 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 all of those things, so that the community would have the comfort of knowing that a park is going to be a park, is always going to be a park. And if you're going to do anything different with the park, which you could, no one says you can't, that it would have to be a unanimous vote of the commission. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Nancy Thomas.
Marilyn talked about the default aspect, and that was my question when I read through the comprehensive agreement. My question, I have a couple of questions. One is, why is, why hasn't it been done now that it's nine days away from the deadline? Why hasn't any of this been done? I'm not, I'm not looking to persecute any one person, but I'm curious, the process, who should have been making this happen over the last three years? So that by now, we'd have what was promised and not having to wait, I don't know how long. How long is it going to take to make it happen? So the first question is, can somebody tell me who was responsible or what department was responsible for making this happen in the first place?
Well, Nancy, can I just stop for you for just a second? You know, this has been a very cordial relationship that we have had with Inter Miami Beckham. And, 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 you know, what they've been able to provide for their team and for the city has been remarkable and unprecedented. And then somewhere along the way, something came about called COVID. And COVID has been an interference with a lot of what has been going on, interfered with performance and interference with availability of resources. And so instead of everyone coming up here and banging the table and saying, you know, default, 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 you know, there's, there are concepts in law that make, that allow, make allowances for situations that are unforeseeable, such as pandemics. So I think we should focus on the positive, and let's see how we can get to the next level, rather than looking to find fault. Because I really think that there is a way, there's a path to success here, and I think that we have a cooperative partner here who's still, you know, willing to work with us and get things done. So let's think that way. Is that okay? Can we do that?
No, I understand that. I appreciate that. I understand, you know, COVID, honestly, I don't know why I wasn't thinking of COVID.
Yeah.
But generally, I mean, the COVID's not been as big an issue for the last year. My question is, so forgive me if I overstepped, you know, accusations. I didn't, I didn't mean to, I understand. But the stadium got built, and in record time, it seems. So who, what department is responsible for making this happen now? And, and does the comprehensive agreement, I guess Mr. Wallow said there'd be an addendum about, will there be a different deadline? You know, what is, what's it going to take and who's going to be, going to make it happen to have this park come to fruition? Who is it?
Well, I think, let me, let me just, let's just cut to the chase. I think the city manager's office and his departments will be responsible for taking this next forward. There is a transition that's going on now, as you're aware, and so there might be a little hiccup in this process, but I know we'll be able to pick up the pieces, you know, quickly, and I think that we will see success sooner than later. So.
Would there be a new deadline in the comprehensive agreement, an addendum?
Yeah, of course.
There would be a date?
So, yeah, Mayor, if I could just, I think I'd like to, you know, we've heard a couple of comments about default and deadlines. It's not that black and white in this particular process. And I think I'd like the city attorney to opine on that a little bit, that I don't think we, I mean, we're not at a point where we have a dig our heels in moment and write a default letter and it go anywhere. So we obviously have to take that into consideration, too, as we work together, as you've mentioned, collaboratively to get where, where we want to get to. But you're, you're absolutely right, Nancy. That stadium got built, and two days before it was supposed to open, two days before it was supposed to open, Major League Soccer canceled the soccer season. And, and all of the contractors that were working on the site, finishing it up, in the, in the great first days of COVID, if you go back to that time, we were all 14 days to slow the spread, and then, oh, by the way, stay home for a month. And, you know, the carry costs of construction crews and companies at that pivotal moment of the pandemic is what caused them to demobilize. And the second they demobilized, we then also started to have discussions on maybe wanting something more than what was in the comprehensive agreement on that site. So, you know, we've been in this collaborative back and forth ever since that happened. So it's, it, it hasn't been perfect, nor do I believe, because it's been perfect, it hasn't been perfect that there's a black or white. We're either, we're either default or we're not. I, I think, I think we're risky if we start to go down that road. Alan, do you have any? That's.
No, I agree, and I'm somewhat limited as to what I can say, because obviously my, my interests are to your, to the city's, you know, interest. So I don't want to say anything contrary to that, but you're correct that it's not as simple as defaulting Inter Miami.
But also, we lost time. COVID also made workers leave the site. We didn't have that continuity on the site.
Correct.
To keep going. So that could not have happened at that time. And also, I think.
And that was not the period of time in the, in our response to COVID, we were dealing with curfews and beaches that were closed.
Right.
And needs to be home.
But also, I think also as a commission, we, as policymakers, were starting to talk about other options on the site. So we also were involved, just as maybe Inter Miami was involved, we were involved. So it's not all just Inter Miami, because we, as a commission, were talking about lots of different things. We were talking about women's soccer, or as Commissioner Moritas mentioned, maybe let's look at esports, look at a skate park. We never, we never, as a commission, defined exactly what we wanted there. So it's really, again, I think I agree with the mayor when he says, let's not look to blame a department, or whose fault is it? You know, it's a process. There are lots of moving parts over the years, and I think that it's a good thing that we're getting to where we are now, and it will happen.
I'm not looking to blame, to place blame. And forgive me, because I did, somehow COVID didn't register right. I had other things going on in my life. But, so the question really is, according to the comprehensive, this is more of a question that Marilyn and I have, not an accusation, but a question. Now we're there, and nothing, you know, what's going to happen now? And how fast can it be done? Because this is a public space, and, you know, they're able to make money and do all their stuff, and we can use it to a certain extent. But let's not let this part of it go, because, you know, how things can go. So I hope it'll become a priority. Thank you.
Well, I think you heard us all say.
I think it is.
We are in favor of moving forward and not delaying it three years, which was maybe initially discussed. So I think you heard us all say, want to move forward. We want to build what they said they were going to build in the comprehensive agreement. So I think that's a great next step.
Right, and we're still ahead of the curve. How many decades did that public space sit dormant with just tumbleweeds and?
A very long time.
Decades, it sat there. So we're still ahead of that time curve, I think, and we'll get it done in less than the time that it sat dormant and nothing happened there. So I think even with COVID and all the other interruptions, we're, you know, we're still on schedule. We'll be okay.
All right, very good. So let's move.
I just want to ask a question of, I guess Marilyn's group. Who, who communicated with the Soul Bowl? Who communicated with the Soul Bowl? I said your group. I don't know who said it, but.
Mary.
No, I'm saying, but I know the Soul Bowl got thrown in there. I want to know, I know Stephanie accommodated us having the game scheduled there.
And a football.
It's a football, big bowl game, so.
Dillard and who else, Robert? Dillard High School and?
It's typically, it's Dillard and Ely High School, two of the biggest rivalries.
Yes, and that's.
And hold on a second. And I know that we had gotten them scheduled to go in there, then at the last minute, they, they canceled. And I'm just more concerned about, why did they cancel? Because that might be some things we can add to the stadium moving forward, because they need a large arena to play that game. There's thousands of people that come out to that game, and typically, the schools who host it make a ton of money by either having it at Ely or Dillard High School, even where they can't even facilitate the crowd. But the parking, the tickets, I mean, they make a lot of money for their schools on that day. So I'm just curious as to what happened in the final analysis of that, that bowl game.
I, I don't know what happened in that, but the way this came about, and Commissioner Sorenson referenced this a while ago, he, when we were having these conversations with Inter Miami, we had a meeting, and Commissioner Sorenson, and all of you were involved in this, because this was like at commission meetings, too. And the school board folks came, not just Sean, not just Jen Hamilton, but Rocky, who was up at Lockhart for a long time.
Right.
And knows the facility. So they was, they said, well, out of all of these events that we have, not that Lauderdale and Stranahan's game's not major, but out of all of the events we have, there's one event that's usually so big, it would be great to have this facility. So that was the impetus for saying, that would be the, that would be the definite one thing you would want to have in the big stadium. Now, the other events, and this is my recollection, the other events were to hopefully put Stranahan and Lauderdale's homecoming game there. And then, if you remember four events, your memory is probably better than mine. So, but definitely, the number one event was to be that, because that's the biggest event we have, apparently, as a, as a high school thing. Is that how you remember it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, Marilyn.
I think we can learn, I think we can learn a lot as to what we would need to accommodate the biggest football game in Broward County.
Yeah, no, it, and you know what? I do want to say this. When you go up there, as I was able to do with Stephanie and people from Inter Miami and the Stranahan team, when they were playing Miramar that night, as you, when you go up and you're with that crowd, you just realize what an incredible thing it is to have that high school stadium there.
Oh, yeah.
So I would tell you that if there's one thing you can sit here and be proud about, it's to know that we brought our high schools back to Stran, we brought our back, our high schools back to Lockhart, and that they are able to play there. And, and really, I think the goal here, and Stephanie and I, we're going to talk, we'll figure something out and get, and come back if that's okay.
I agree with you 100%. I just think the, the expansion of the, of the, of the stands and the press box would just really give them what every other high school has.
Absolutely.
I mean, this is June. Do we have Soul Bowl on the calendar already for the fall?
I don't know, but I know when we first started this conversation, I mentioned Soul Bowl. I mentioned an array of things, but somewhere in that conversation, other things got prioritized, and all of a sudden, years later, Soul Bowl came back up abruptly. And then they left abruptly, so.
Well, I do think we should discuss the four events that the city is allowed to have at the large stadium.
But I think we keep misconstruing where those events should take place. If it's high school football, it should be.
Large stadium.
It should be in the high school stadium. When we're talking about the events at the bigger park, I thought it was going to be for us to have, take some of the stuff off of our beach, or take some of the bigger concerts and put them in that stadium. That's what I thought when we initially started this, not to put Soul Bowl there. Soul Bowl could have been accommodated in the stadium, you know, had we had the right amenities afforded, because parking is there for high school, without question. But the amenities aren't there, and now we're trying to throw them into a schedule that may or may not accommodate them because of the scheduling of soccer, or whatever else Inter Miami may have during those, those timeframes, which makes that window of our, of our opportunities that much harder to, to schedule the event, because it could be during the soccer's, soccer's program. Am I correct?
Yep. Well, I know the mayor said we were going to have a New Year's Eve concert at Inter Miami Stadium.
Wow. We just got a program.
So I, I know we talked about it. I think we talked about it in our goal setting. So have we contracted, contacted Live Nation, anyone? Have we set up anything that we could start planning at least one event, because we're going to have four a year? So one.
I know that's, I know that's great, but me personally, I don't see how I could ever leave Los Solos in our New Year's anchor drop. I mean, that's just.
Well, we would go to the anchor after the concert.
I'm just saying, it, it's very difficult. It has to be another signature event that we create.
All right.
Or take something off the barrier.
Ms. Toothaker, would you work on that, please?
Let's, let's pick, let's pick an event, and let's get it on the calendar. It could be, I don't know, it could, it could be the new commission's elected party.
But you say these things, but I think we need to have more time.
I agree. You're, well, I, I suggested it. I think it's going to take time to, to accomplish it, but I don't think there's any objection to it, so.
No, no, I'm not objecting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got to really seriously come up with what we're going to do those four days in the big stadium.
I don't know.
Get the high schools what they need for that stadium. And I think the rest of this stuff, the work itself, especially after what I've hearing tonight, that we want to go ahead and move forward with the original plan for the park piece.
Yep, it's going to be.
I wouldn't come alluded with these other things, and I think the park piece is more, way more important than the four programmable days.
I agree. And the state, high school football stadium.
All right, let's, let's move on, because we've got a lot more still to do.
Okay.
So business three, the PDD ordinance, Mr. Lager.
You still have to come up with a, with an event.
Yeah.
We do.
Who will be leading the discussion on that?
Is it Veterans Day?
I guess I'll let, I'll let Anthony start, and then I'll chime in as, as necessary.
There are three people, four people have signed up to speak on that also.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioner, Anthony Ferrardo, Director of Development Services. So there have been ongoing requests from interested parties on increasing the overall height limitation that we currently have on our PDD ordinance. If you recall, the height is calculated as a two-phased approach. You can take the height and multiply it by one, sorry, add 125% to it to a maximum of 300 feet. So we put this item on the agenda to see if the city commission had any direction on how they would like staff to look at this, and if you'd like it to be an item that we bring forward. Previous to the current PDD ordinance, we had the ID ordinance, which was innovative development, and the planned unit development ordinance approved way back in 2002. Neither of those had a height limitation on them. Those were assessed as part of the individual projects. It wasn't until the committee got together for the PDD and suggested the height limitation and the calculations associated with it, that it was approved as a limitation. So that's basically a summary of, of what this item is and what the, what the question is to the commission on how to proceed.
Mayor, I have a question. I thought when we, didn't we discuss this like back in November? Chris brought this up to us in November.
So there was a conversation about the interest at that point. So that was associated with the request, similar request that we have for today. Interested party was Pier 66. And the direction from the city commission that I recall was that they go out and see if members of the community would be okay with some sort of modification to the ordinance to increase the height. I don't know the status of any of those communications, but we did, we were asked recently, and so that's why we put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
What's the purpose of this, what's the purpose of this item then today? If we, we were waiting for neighborhood input with regard to next steps, I don't think the commission was prepared to go forward and make any decisions or seek any consensus on anything until we had neighborhood feedback. So if we don't know what the neighborhood feedback is, where, why are we on this subject today?
So it's, it's an item that we haven't talked about in a while. We did want to see if you had changed any of your thoughts on how we would move forward, if it's still the same.
Well, the same is, is we're in a holding pattern, waiting to hear what the neighborhood feedback is. So have there been, have there been any meetings in the various affected neighborhoods? Like, for example, this whole thing was initiated because the Pier 66 proposal. The Pier 66 proposal wanted to take it in excess of what the permitted heights were. We suggested, as a commission, that, that the staff reach out to the affected neighborhoods, which would be Harbor, Harbor Beach, Harbor Inlet, the neighborhoods in and around 17th Street, Causeway, and the like. Has that process begun?
So the direction that was given was not given to staff. It was given to the applicant who was interested in increasing the height. So staff did not make any effort to reach out to anybody. If we're given direction to move forward with this as we present it today, we would definitely do that as part of the process.
All right, so maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe it was the applicant. So Ms. Toothaker, can you come up here and let us know what the status of your outreach program has been?
But Mayor, my only question then is, if you read this CAM, this is not in any way limited to this project. This is a citywide amendment to the ULDR.
No, no, I understand that, but it was initiated by this particular project. With the discussion never even, was never even brought up until the, until the Pier 66 folks asked us to readdress the, the limitations. But you're correct. If we do make any changes to the PDD ordinance, it will affect the entire city. So yes, you are correct. But in terms of this particular project, have, has any outreach been done to the affected neighborhoods? That's my question.
Thank you.
Mayor, Stephanie Toothaker, on behalf of Tavistock. So let me first say that I, I was not a part of those meetings, but those meetings did meetings, but those meetings did happen. They were held by Tavistock, by Jesse Blakely and Chris Gandolfo. They held two Zoom meetings and had over 200 participants of those meetings where they discussed this proposal. All they're asking is that this be studied by, together with staff, not that the commission make any kind of decision today. And my understanding from Ms. Blakely is that she did do a poll of neighbors. Again, this is, I'm laying the second hand. It was not done by me. And that has approximately 70 people in support. But that's, that's the purpose of us asking that we have the opportunity to continue to work with staff on this to bring it back to you as a complete package for consideration.
All right. So, okay, thank you.
So what that means is that we're going to have to start an ordinance amendment through the DRC process that would go to planning and zoning and ultimately end up with the commission. So because this is, and I think Anthony would say this too, because this is a topic that has had some controversy attached to it in the past, years ago, we just wanted before we, before we entered it into that DRC, PNZ, to the city commission process, we didn't want you all to be shocked by that or hear that, you know, what is this ULDR proposed amendment that's starting to move through a process? Maybe a very good thing for us to just stick it into a process and let the process play it out because then it will have all of the correct public vetting, all of the correct public input. But at some point, I also wanted to close this loop because we were the ones that directed this, Tavistock, to go into the community and hold these meetings and get this input. At some point, we owe it to them to follow back up and say, you know, that was effort that was worthwhile or, you know, if this is not something that we're interested in doing, amending the PDD ordinance, then you might as well stop. Well, I think we also owe them that, that if, if the work is, that's partly why the timing is what it is. Anthony's like, I just really want to get a sense of where our commission is before I started in a process and.
That's the whole point. I mean, if we start a process like you described, which would, which automatically would trigger all the, the neighborhood outreach protocols, that makes a lot of sense, except that if we start the ordinance process, it almost makes it look like the commission wants it to happen and we haven't gotten there yet. So why don't we have that discussion? I have four people signing up to speak, but I think we should have a discussion amongst ourselves. Is this where we want to see the city go?
In terms of the whole.
In terms of the whole change of the PDD. Exactly. Not just this project, but the whole, because it affects the whole city. So maybe we should have this discussion and now, you know, let's go commissioner by commissioner and just see where we want to go with this. Commissioner Maritis, do you have any thoughts on this?
Mayor, may I say one more thing for clarity?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I apologize, Mayor. I just wanted to, for clarity's sake, the project that's been proposed and many have, people have seen it. It's been made public, the, the one that is, that is designed with the exoskeletons and the external pools. It's been well received by many people, maybe not by everybody. That project could not be submitted to the city. That doesn't comply in any aspect with what the code is that's on the books. We had actually, I'm just going to bring another project. We had actually worked with staff on the PDD ordinance many, many, many years ago with the district commissioner for another project that I would say is very successful, which is the Celine project. The Pier 66 project could not even achieve the height that Celine reaches under the PDD ordinance as drafted. So Celine is higher than what Pier 66 could be because the way that ordinance is drafted, I think it's a little, me personally, I think it's a little misleading and a little funky the way it's drafted. It's a multiplier of the existing underlying zoning. So a project right around the corner can go significantly higher than, than what you could do today on Pier 66. And so I think that the developer would love to submit a project and start the public process and have those discussions with its neighbors, but it can't because the ordinance doesn't accommodate it.
What is the height of Celine?
Celine is 300 feet, two towers at 300 feet.
But I think Celine started at a higher base. In other words, the maximum.
Celine started at 240.
Correct. But the height, that's because that's, right, because that's a higher base than what Pier 66 can start at. Pier 66 starts at a lower base. So when you do the multiplier, that's going to affect the maximum.
So as a result, the, as a result, the underlying zoning at Pier does not allow the Tavistock project to go forward.
As it's been proposed.
As proposed. Well, anything, anything close to like what's been proposed, it would look a lot closer to the sales project that was approved pursuant to a birdhouse.
All right. So, so what are you telling us then about the Tavistock project? It's just, it's off the table now?
I, it's not that it's off the table. It's that it would require at least a consideration of some amendments to the PDD ordinance as drafted.
Right. Okay.
That's, and that's all, that's all we were asking, just for, for a discussion of the PDD ordinance and to look at it in the context of this is something that we can achieve here if the community likes this project better, which we believe, and again, now I'm just reiterating what I was told, but based on those meetings that were held with the community, it was very well received. It's lower density. Yes, they're higher, but it was lower density, which is less traffic, and there's a lot of benefits to doing a taller, skinnier building, but the PDD ordinance as drafted would not permit that project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Several people have signed up to speak. Do you want to hear from the public first or do you want to comment right now? Commissioner Maritis?
What do you all think?
Why don't we hear from the public and then we can.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. I guess you want to speak first.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Wait, 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 wait. Before you start, identify yourself. Did you sign up to speak?
I did.
Are you Mr. Cole?
I am.
Okay. I didn't call you up, but now that you're there.
I'm here to make a speech. I'm here to discuss something before you start deliberating.
Well, wait, 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 wait. Excuse me, sir. Sir, there's a, there's a process and a protocol here. The way we do it is we sign up to speak, which you did, and then I call you up. You don't just show up because there are people ahead of you. Okay? But since you're there, we'll let you speak.
All I want to.
Wait, hey, I'm speaking and you'll have your three minutes and you'll have uninterrupted three minutes. And after the end of three minutes, you conclude your remarks. Okay? There you go.
All I want to clarify at this point is I know of no meetings that have been held with our neighborhood. None.
All right. Do you have any comments?
These 200 people, I'm a board member on the Harbor Inlet Board, and I know of no meetings. I know of no outreach that has taken place. There was a meeting between Joanne, our president. She happens to be out of the country right now, so she couldn't be here, but I believe she sent you all letters today or texts yesterday saying, you know, reiterating our opposition to this proposal.
Okay.
So, you know, and there's been, prior to your conversation last time, there'd been a meeting between Jesse and Joanne, and that's been the only contact that we've had. So I don't know who the community is. I don't know who all these people are that, you know, are supporting this project.
The 70 people?
Think it's wonderful, you know, but it's not us. It's not the community. It's not the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cole.
All right.
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Marilyn, you're next, I guess, followed by Mary Furtig, followed by Nancy Thomas.
Marilyn Nomano for the Harbordale Civic Association. We went through this about a couple of, a couple of months ago, and there was no appetite for opening up this whole can of worms throughout the whole city. Since that time, Tavistock has held two Zoom meetings. I attended some of them. And they've been sending emails around the city to a email list. I don't know who they send them to, asking them to check off that, you know, they think it's a good project. That may be where the 70 people are coming from. But as Bill Cole mentioned to you, Harbordale, Lauderdale, Lauderdale Harbors, Harbordale, and Harbor Beach, those are the three immediate communities. We are adamantly opposed to the 500-foot-tall building proposal from Tavistock. This is all about the Tavistock proposal. It's the only person, the only party, the only interested party, as Anthony has mentioned, who is bringing this to you because they want to build taller buildings. I do not have any problem with them building taller buildings. We would be happy to engage with them about a PDD under the current ordinance. There may be some ways that we can work together to make a better site plan. We are all in favor of that, but they have not taken that approach. Their approach has been to put out this beautiful webpage and these emails to the general public and trying to put pressure on you to open up this can of worms. I don't think you should do that until at least they have come to us and talked to us about an alternative site plan. We're open. We want to. They have gone radio silent in terms of the community, the two, the three civic associations immediately around them. They have not engaged with us. They have not offered to engage with us. They don't even answer the emails anymore. So I think that this is something that you should consider in your deliberations. I think the mayor is correct. Why are we discussing this when they have not even made an approach to the appropriate communities around them? They want to do a different site plan? Let's sit down and let's talk about it. We all supported their original site plan. We came to a consensus on the original site plan. We can do that again because there are, there are things that they're offering, a reduced density, a good design, more open space. We're open to that. We're amenable to that. But the way they've gone about this to sort of push this, you know, 500-foot-tall, three-towers proposal and bypassing the appropriate procedures for discussions and consultations and collaboration, I think that they've been very, this was not the way to do it. There was a good way to do it. There's still a good way to do it. Let's do it. Let's sit down and let's talk with each other and talk about a new site plan for Pier 66. But there's no need for us to get everybody in the city into a tizzy about changing the citywide ordinance because you'll be looking at 500-foot buildings all over the city. Once you open up that can of worms, every developer is going to be in here.
Well, we already have five, we already have a 500-foot building.
That's, those are places where it's already permitted to be.
Right, right.
But if you open up the can of worms on the PDD, they're going to be all over the place. So I think you should be very cautious before you go down that path. If not necessary, we can sit down with Tavistock. We can work out a new site plan that gives them some additional height and gives us some reduced density, more open space. It can work out. This could be a win-win.
Okay.
But don't go down that path until we've had that opportunity. Please. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mary, followed by Nancy Thomas.
I just was coming to say that the reason there was a PUD ordinance and a group of us got very upset. I know Jackie's here for the summer of whatever year that was. We spoke in front of homeowners associations all over the city. And the, and the commission decided to put a moratorium on PUDs and appointed a task force to discuss the topic. And Jim Brady and I were the consensus to people who'd been out talking and got put on the task force along with five other representatives. Then a few years passed by, and then there were new concerns. And so what did the city do? The city reconvened the task force, gave us those concerns. We looked at the entire issue holistically, not just at one issue being height, but at all of the issues being what other modifications might you want to make. And then we came forward to you, and by then I think you all were here. So you then did it. This was a process. It wasn't just a single, should we raise the height from 200 feet? It was kind of a holistic approach, and I think that is really the appropriate approach to take when you're looking at something that impacts every section of the city. So I don't know about, I just, I just wanted to remind you of how this task force has twice before handled this and how I thought that was a good option because it was a very well-balanced group that considered more than one single issue. It considered the totality of the circumstances. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Yes. I live in Harbor Inlet. I have for 35 years. And I can tell you that there was a survey emailed to, I don't know exactly who, I got one, and it was from Tavistock. It was extremely biased. It was promotional in, on their behalf, and it was actually a little threatening in that the position they took was, well, you can have this dense, blocky, you know, original site plan that's approved, or you can have more opens, you know, better views and, you know, less density and all if you go with taller buildings. It was ridiculous. And then they had a button you could click if you support this. This, this was so, so poorly done. And I took Jesse to task. I emailed her immediately and I said, this is not playing fair. This is wrong. I never heard any more about that. I don't know who these 70 people are, but there was also a Zoom meeting. I think there were two opportunities to, I guess in the fall. I participated in one. Again, very extremely one-sided. It was like a promotional meeting. You could not speak. It was, again, I never heard anything more about it. And I can assure you, as a homeowners association, there has not been a meeting with us in person or otherwise as an association. I appreciate Marilyn's approach. However, I, I am totally against even entertaining this. We are not Sunny Isles. We are not Miami. We are not New York. This is the barrier island. We need the light and the space, and I'd rather have it shorter and denser, personally. I'm not the only person involved in this, obviously, but I think if we give in to this height request, we are really going down the wrong path. We're going to have, we're going to start looking like Sunny Isles because as Marilyn said, everybody's going to ask for it. It's not a need. There's no need to change this. There's no need to even entertain it. The community hasn't come to you and said, oh, we want taller buildings. This is a developer and, and the community always loses, if not everything, a lot to the developers. Stephanie's reporting things, I'm sure she believes to be true, but I can tell you, those are debatable. I, I don't know anybody, and I know everybody, I've said this about something else. People don't want skyscrapers at the entrance to the beach, at the entrance to our neighborhood. We don't want it. Please, please, don't, don't go there. It's not necessary. It's a want, not a need. It's not going to benefit, how's it going to benefit us? It's going to make them more money, but it's not going to benefit us at all. And I feel really strongly about this. And this is where, please do listen closely to the community and not to the developers.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Maritis, you have any thoughts?
So help me understand the process. Today, we have to decide if we even want to, I guess, consider the idea.
Right. Do we want to?
So that they can then.
Do we have an appetite on the commission to see this go forward, to do neighborhood outreach throughout the city to see whether or not the community wants to increase the opportunity for higher buildings, not just at Pier 66, but throughout the city? Is there an appetite on this?
I would say that yes, I would be okay with the city staff asking the public how they feel about this.
Because it would affect Uptown, too.
Well, it'd affect our whole city. I, I'm not saying I support it or I don't support it. I'm saying I would support our city staff bringing this to the public to get some input, to understand the process, to understand their, how they feel.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Is that the question?
Yeah. Well, what, what does that mean?
What does that mean?
Did I answer the question correctly?
So let me ask Anthony to come back to the podium.
If we, I'm sorry, Jackie.
Anthony.
You're not a commissioner yet.
Or maybe, tell, tell me exactly what you want from us.
Yeah. Can you articulate exactly the feedback you're looking for from the commission so that, so that they get a sense as to what you're hoping to take away from this? Because if there's a desire to even research it further, we just need to know that there's that desire because then we're going to research it. We're going to put some sort of a proposal together to start through the ULDR amendment process, right? Is that, have I captured that correctly?
Yes. So that's, that's correct. We want to know how you would like us to move forward with it, if at all. So if you want us to do outreach before we take any other action, we can do that. If you want us to just move forward through the ULDR amendment process, we can do that as well. Status quo, we leave it the same. We're just trying to get an understanding of what the consensus of the commission is on taking any action on it.
So if you do outreach and you come back with that information, that information says exactly what the group has expressed to us tonight, no, what happens?
It would be up to the commission how you want to, you know, use that information for a decision. You still would direct staff on whether or not you want to move forward.
But if we direct staff to go forward with the whole, the whole ULDR, when you come back, that is for us to vote up or down. Am I correct?
Yes. If we enter into the ULDR process, the process would be what the city manager had mentioned earlier, DRC, Planning and Zoning Board for a recommendation to the city commission, and then two readings at city commission.
And how long does, does that process take?
For a code amendment, if you exclude public, you know, multiple outreach to the public, and I'm not suggesting that we should, but if you.
And I wouldn't suggest that either.
So if you just go with the process in the ordinance, it can happen relatively quickly, probably say two readings of commission would take at least a month to a month and a half. You have to do one month to get the minutes approved for PZ, plus put it on the PZ agenda. So you're talking probably about four to five months.
You won't be here.
No, I won't be here, and I would hate to.
Hate to do it during the summer, too.
Hate to do it and then not be able to, to finish it. I don't know if it'll be, you know, fair, but I mean, I don't have a problem participating. I would just like to hear what everyone has, everyone else has to say. But I think I put the real issue out there, which is, no, what does it mean when we do that?
Well, can I just say something? You know, we hear the drumbeat from the community day after day, week after week. People say, you know, we're overdeveloping, you know, developers are getting their own way, you know, we're, we're overbuilding. And at the same time, people say, oh, the price of housing is just crazy. You can't rent anything for less than $3,000 or $4,000 a month, and that's just a one-bedroom. And, you know, how are we going to keep prices down and at the same time not allow, you know, more development? Well, the reason why more development exists is because it helps, it helps stabilize the pricing, believe it or not. In other words, the popularity of Fort Lauderdale continues to grow. And if we limit the number of available units in this city, the price of housing is going to skyrocket. If people think it's expensive now, it's going to be twice as much. So we have to come to terms. We have to have a come-to-Jesus moment and decide amongst ourselves, are we going to continue to allow development to occur in the city? And if you, if we cap it at, at whatever the PDD ordinance currently provides, if we cap it at that, that means we're going to limit the amount of new units that can be built in the city because there's only so much real estate that, that new buildings can be built on. So maybe that's another discussion for another time, but the reality is that, is Fort Lauderdale continues to become popular. continues to become popular, and it is very popular. Thank you, everybody, for making it such a wonderful place to live. The reality is that, that the, the inventory of new units is what keeps the prices steady. And if the more inventory we add, the more, the, at least we have a handle on the price of housing. As soon as we cut off inventory, the price of housing is going to go even, even higher. And it sounds crazy, but that's the way the market works. So we have to decide at some point, do we have enough real estate out there to allow new housing to be built? The reality is, we don't even have enough flex units in the entire city to allow new housing to be built. So that's another conversation we're going to have to have because we're running out of units.
I think that's what this is all about.
That's what this, that's partly what this is about. Yes.
Well, Mayor, I think when we're talking about affordability, like, you know, I can't afford a one-bedroom place. I don't know if these particular projects are affordable anyways. I mean, when they were presented to us, it was maybe someone's second or third home. So I don't know how much incentivizing I want to do for someone's third home. I do agree that we need to have some incentives and, you know, maybe the Geller Amendment makes sense, you know? And also, I think the Northwest Rack has some flex units, too, left. So I think we're okay, and, and that's where the affordable housing may go. So I don't know. I, I don't know if I really feel like I need to incentivize someone's third home.
No, I'm just saying that the more inventory you have, the chances of the prices becoming more stabilized are greater. If you start to cut off the inventory, it-
Well, inventory of reasonably priced places, not inventory, I mean, we're, we're selling our city to Airbnbs and third homeowners.
Well, that's, that's a, you're, it's a good point, but it's another subject. Because, because the reality is that you say more affordable housing. Well, you only have affordable housing if you have greater supply than there is demand. So if you have more supply than there's demand, then you're going to have more affordable housing. If you have more demand than there is housing, that's what pushes the price up, and that's why we have inflation.
And no one around here, and especially this commission, is saying, I want affordable housing in my neighborhood. Let's just be realistic now. I, I am the affordable housing king. Yeah, you, you want that at, where Tavistock is going? You want affordable housing there? Well, I'll give them 500 feet then to that, tonight.
Well, maybe that's what we do.
Yeah, you, you say that, you say that, but then you say other things in your other presentations up here that never include my district. And I appreciate you for bringing the Northwest Rack into play because we do have opportunities there, but all of those sites are already approved with affordable housing projects coming down the pipeline.
Right.
So if there's any more room to do that, I, I would welcome it. But I think our fight has been collectively, is, is how do we get more affordable units throughout the city? Where does that occur? If it's not city-owned property, no developer I know is looking to do that because it's not a great return on the investment. And if we don't incentivize them, they won't do it. And the Geller Act is a good act because now if you want to get these extra units, you're going to do these affordable units. And I don't think that's going to, what, what we're talking about tonight is not talking about affordable housing.
No, but what I'm saying, when I say affordable housing-
I know, but-
I'm talking about market rate-
I get it.
That's affordable.
And even affordable is not low income, it's workforce.
It's workforce, yep.
It's workforce. It's our police officers, it's our teachers, I mean, it's our professionals.
But I'm talking about keeping the market rate pricing affordable.
But when we start talking and comments come out, you know, we just, we need to just know exactly what it is we're talking about. If you want to be, get serious about affordable housing, I mean, we got a parking garage over this under, underutilized that we can easily, you know, offer as an incentive to do affordable housing. I don't know how deep of a dive we want to do with affordable housing, but tonight we're talking about impacting the ULDR and incentivizing, not incentivizing, but bringing heights and, and it's going to bring a slew of people to the table asking for units.
Right.
And none of them that I know are going to be saying, let's do affordable housing or even workforce or market rate because they're all rentals.
All right. So the question is, do we want the city staff to go ahead and-
That's the question.
And test, test the, test the interest of our, of our, of our neighbors, whether or not they want to allow housing, excuse me, allow buildings to be higher than what is currently permitted?
So, so you just gave a presentation.
Right.
I thought it was great, but you never told me what your intentions were for me to really base my decision on having a consensus. You never really said anything after the great speech.
No, I'm saying that we have to have that discussion.
You want this to move forward? I just want to know what you think.
Well, I'm, as I'm thinking aloud, yes, I think we should-
Okay.
-move forward and have that discussion. Let the community decide where they want to take it. Let us not be the ones to decide that, let the community decide.
That, that helps me. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Couple of thoughts. I also don't want to necessarily demonize the development community and, and say that we don't get anything out of it, but, because we do, and we, we always make sure there are conditions where we're going to benefit, whether it's infrastructure or whatever. And I'll also remind everyone that we just put 20 million extra dollars into our budget and kept our mileage rate the same for the 16th year because of some of the development that we've seen in our city. So that's playing devil's advocate, but we have to remember that, too. There, there are two sides to always look at. I, I want to just tell you why I'm okay with moving forward with this and letting it go through DRC and planning and zoning, and then back to us. Because at the end of the day, we're going to make the final decision on the back end. But this is something that came up on the beach. I thought it was really interesting, and I sat back and I watched it. I didn't really have an active role in it, but I did attend all the meetings. But I saw something that I never thought was going to happen on the beach. When the Celine project came forward, there was actually a discussion over a long period of time. And what eventually happened was, the neighborhood actually said, and I'm really, I'm telling you, I was really surprised when I saw this because I never saw this happen before, the neighborhood actually said, we want the buildings to go taller and thinner because we want to have more space between the buildings, we want to have more, more land on the ground, we want to see the ocean, we want to be able to see the sky, and we want more, more open space on the ground. So they actually decided as a neighborhood association, again, I was really surprised, they actually decided to encourage us, and I believe we did change the zoning to allow for that building to go higher on that site. We did that decision as a commission, and those buildings actually went taller and thinner from the first site plan iteration. So that was a, that was an interesting learning experience for me to watch that happen over time. And I think there are some applications for that. I will tell you why I'm also not that nervous about some of the sky-as-falling approaches to this. If, if this happens, first of all, correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, you need five acres for a PDD, correct?
No, it's two acres.
Just two?
It's two acres, which you can reduce under certain circumstances, and in the rack, you can take it down to a half acre.
Well, this, we're not worried about the rack, but let me ask you a question. What require, does anything require five acres?
For the PDD, I don't believe so.
For some reason, that's in the back of my mind, I'm not worrying about it. But you need two acres at least.
At least two acres.
A minimum of two acres. Now, also, on the barrier island itself, because right now, we're not worried about height downtown because we don't have those limits, right?
Downtown Core, the Downtown Core is the only location in the city where you don't have a height limit.
Exactly. So if we look at some of the other areas of concern, I would be certainly concerned in a neighborhood, I would certainly be concerned on the barrier island, but help me understand this, the barrier island, the number of trips on the barrier island is down to what, about 80?
I believe so. I think it's a little bit less than that.
Less than 80 trips, which means we're not going to see a flurry of development right now on the barrier island because we just don't have the trips.
That's correct. You would-
You're in the city.
Right. Well, I'm going to get to flex units as well, but my-
You would be in a situation where if somebody had, so the project that was before you, last commission meeting for the sunrise?
Yes.
They got credit because they had restaurants. Restaurants generate a lot of trips. So if you had something on the ground, you'd get credit for that in addition to what you may need from the pool if there's enough leftover.
Right. But bottom line, we are at that point now where we're not going to see, just because of the lack of flex units and the trips, we're not going to see that kind of flurry of development that we've experienced in the last couple of decades. It just can't happen right now.
The way it is now, no.
Correct?
I believe so.
Okay. So that, to me, is a little bit of an insurance-
Beach is off, so the beach is off the discussion then, basically.
Well, right, I'm, but I'm-
If you changed the PDD, it wouldn't affect the beach because we don't have the trips or the units.
Right. What I'm saying is, I'm, I'm, I think that these are insurance policies for us that alleviate the concern that things are just going to get crazy. I certainly don't want to see a Sunny Isles. I don't want to see Concrete Canyon. I don't want to see any of that, but I think because of the safeguards that are in place, we can't really even have that. So I, that's not, that's not, that's not a concern of mine. But I, I'm fine with this going through the process and seeing what staff thinks. I'm always open to, you know, seeing what those options are. And, and besides, it will have a public process. When it goes to DRC, it's open to the public. Planning and zoning is open to the public for input, and so is the commission meeting. So there will be public input every step of the way. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have that.
You're, you're correct. Through the, through our memorialized process in our ordinance, there are public meetings and there's public input. Typically, we do outreach prior to that. So we, we've sent communications to, for instance, the Council for Law and Civic Associations for various amendments and asked, do you want a presentation on this prior to us moving forward? They just let us know.
Right.
Neighborhood associations.
Neighborhood associations.
And that's in addition to the minimum requirements.
That's, that's great. That's excellent. But I think that there are enough steps in the process that we will get the public input that we want. And then even at the end of the day, i- if this commission or if the DRC, PZ, and commission decides on an amendment to the ULDR that increases above the 300 feet, that doesn't mean that every project that comes forward as a PDD is going to be approved.
There's a requirement for a supermajority, so you have to have at least four members of the commission approve a PDD regardless of the height?
Right. That was my next point. We have that safeguard as well because, as you just said, you're going to need a supermajority, and that's not necessarily easy, but in other words, there's, there are protections every step of the way to make sure that this is not something that's going to happen really easily. So I, I'm okay with it moving forward because of all of those safeguards that we have in place.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, you know, I, I agree that the, I think we've got to start with the robust, you know, public engagement.
Right. Okay.
So I'm, I'm with you, Mayor.
All right. So that's, so Chris, let us now move forward then in that regard.
Okay.
All right.
Anthony, do we need, do you need to know to what level, though, that we're going to be going out to the community? Do we know what we're proposing? Or do we need guidance on that as well?
So if we, yes, I would like some guidance, just to be clear. I mean, typically, what we would do is we would do a robust outreach prior to getting into the memorialized portion of the ULDR for outreach, because that's usually with the public, in the public meeting settings, right? So when it's on a DRC agenda, it's, it's advertised. When it's on PZ, it's advertised. When it's on city commission, it's advertised. But we do outreach over and above that typically. So I could, not advocating for it, I don't want to sound like I'm advocating for it, I could get it on a PZ agenda within about a month if that was the direction of the commission.
I, I don't think we're in a hurry.
Yeah. I think the robust word that was used by both Anthony and the vice mayor is my concern that we get it in the community and let them give us some feedback so we can have something to hang our hats on. The robust, I want you to go over and beyond, not just try to rush this to PZ, let's, let's do a process that can get us the answers that we do, or at least what I would feel comfortable with.
Anthony, I have one question for a clarification. So if a parcel is like 50 units per acre, and we change this ordinance and we're making it taller, how many, how would the units per acre be calculated? Because I'm concerned about density, kind of like Steve said, height and, and a beautiful building may be one thing, but if it stayed at 50 units per acre and they just want to be tall, bigger units and maybe even more expensive units, then the density wouldn't be as impactful around the surrounding community. So how does the unit per acre thing work out?
The question, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I see the man with the notebook.
The question that was presented to us wasn't about density, it was only about height.
But do you, do you see where I'm going with this?
Right.
Like, to so, so to alleviate neighbors' concerns, maybe the unit per acre stays the same, and it's just a tall, slender, beautiful building, it's a little bit bigger, it's a little bit more high-end, so their concerns about the density.
Right. It's a, it's a maximum of 50 units per acre plus the, the number of dwelling units for the density of the underlying zoning. So for instance, if you're in RMH 60, which is 60 dwelling units per acre-
Speak up, Anthony.
If you're, the way it works is, it's the underlying zoning, if it's residential, gives you your base number of units per acre. So in for, in my example, RMH 60 is 60 units per acre. The way the ordinance is written is that the PDD adds an additional 50 units per acre.
So do we have to add it if we change the ordinance? Do we have to add the additional, you know, 50 units per acre? Can we just keep it as the underlying? You get 60 units per acre, even if you, we want to amend this PDD. So yes, you get to be taller and more beautiful, but we just don't want the density, you know, right outside of our neighborhoods.
Well, to a certain extent, the tying the, a density limitation to the height probably doesn't make sense from a planning perspective because the impact is the impact in terms of traffic, right? So the height is really the impact-
It is.
... of the building mass of the building, not really the density. So if the commission, in your example, it's, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you would keep the density the way the code is written for PDD now for the increased density if you cap the height at a certain limit, and then if you go up, you'd want to-
I don't think I'd cap the height if they wanted to, like I said, I think my understanding of maybe let's, let's use Pier 66 if they, they just want to be bigger, more high-end units. So maybe the density itself doesn't increase, just the height does to allow for a nicer design.
I think it's much less density with the, it is. I think you're right. It's much less density.
So that's what I'm saying. I think neighbors are concerned about density. So if we were the new ordinance in a way that allows for additional height to give some design creativity, but we limit the density, the units per acre, then we don't, then we still have the same amount of units per acre, and we just have a prettier building, which I think, you know, a lot of us might like.
So let me, uh, let me just clarify something. Chris just pointed out that I made an error when I was explaining how the density works. So what it is, it's the maximum of either, either 50 units per acre per PDD or the maximum of density for the underlying zoning. I was adding the two together, you don't do that. So in my example, they could, because it would be 60 units per acre for the underlying density, they would still have access to 60 units per acre. If you were on an RMM 25, then they would have access to 50 units per acre. I apologize.
So it stays the same? Because I know in, in the, the South Rack we are looking at, I think we are giving some, like, going up to 100 units per acre if it was affordable. So that's just a more dense project when we are looking down here on Andrews. So-
Yeah, but the South Rack is more downtown.
No, I understand, but I'm just, I think neighbors are con, they're concerned about density being right there. But if we show that the units per acre stay the same, regardless if it's, you know, 300 feet or 500 feet, or maybe I'm still wrong about that.
No, you're.
So how, how does it, how does it impact, let's say if it's close to a neighborhood? How, how would this impact, yeah?
Well, so there's, there's criteria in the ordinance now and PDD ordinance. It talks about impacts to, to, to neighboring areas, right? So it, it's basically mimics some of our neighborhood compatibility language. It talks about mass, scale, that type of thing, types of uses that are appropriate. The density, where you'd be able to increase the density is if you were in an area that had lower density than the 50 units per acre. So again, if you're in RMM 25, you could potentially come in for a PDD and say, I'd like to do, um, 50 units per acre because the PDD ordinance would allow that, again with a super majority vote by the city commission.
Okay, so maybe we need to look at the underlying zoning of some of these areas we're talking, what is it where the Pier 66 is, the south side?
Pier 66 is in B1, so it would be 50 units per acre.
So it's 50 units per acre now and if we change the ordinance, it's 50 units.
And 50 units per acre is consistent with our existing mixed use, mixed use provision, which allows up to 50 units per acre in commercial corridors.
So right now they have 50 units per acre. If we changed it, it's 50 units per acre, cause that's the max they can go.
Well, again, and this was just about height, we weren't asked to look at density.
I understand, I understand, but I hear what Steve's saying too about maybe a taller, skinnier building, maybe it, maybe it does have some merit. So just, just wondering, so I think when we talk to the community, we have to really help them understand the density. I think that's their biggest concern, but maybe I'm wrong, but just be clear about that. Cause if I wasn't that clear, then maybe they wouldn't be that clear either.
Understood.
And there are different parcels I know, so there's underlying zoning, uh, all these different places. So it's hard to talk about all of them, but good luck. All right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, so I think you have some direction and, uh,
Yes.
let us know when you completed your, your research, all right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, let's see, that was business three. And now we're on to commission reports. Thank you everybody for participating in these discussions. Commissioner Moritas.
Yes, I'll be brief. Happy to see that the no smoking on the beach or public parks passed. So what that means for us is we need to pass an ordinance.
All right, so, so let's discuss what was passed. What was passed was not an anti-smoking.
You can smoke cigars.
Bill, but it was an anti-smoking butt bill, so.
Those cigarettes.
So they're allowing, they're allowing cigars to be smoked on the beach without a filter. Yeah, thank you very much. So apparently there's a certain lobby that was able to succeed in convincing the legislature to allow cigars to be smoked on the beach, so provided they don't have filters on them. So, um, but cigarettes, which have filters, um, are not allowed to be smoked on the beach because it's a litter issue, not a health issue. So yes, you're right Commissioner, we do need to look to do an ordinance now. Do we do, need to do an ordinance or is the statute sufficient?
Well, you probably, no, you want to go ahead because the statute allows you to do an ordinance, so you can do that. We just have to figure out a, an enforcement mechanism. Because if you do it, let's say, if you go simply and do it as a park rule, then you get into a trespass situation. If somebody fails to comply, that brings the police into it. If you want to have, you know, if you have somebody on the beach just smoking, they're not supposed to, they refuse to stop, who's going to cite them, right? I don't know that you want your police officers out there doing that, but then again, we don't have enough code folks to actually do that as well. So we'll have to figure out some sort of enforcement mechanism. We can certainly draft the ordinance, but for it to have an effect, we need to have an enforcement mechanism.
Well, we can draft an ordinance and we, that will allow us to put signs out there saying no smoking, correct? At least we can go that far. And then in terms of enforcement, I believe it was a code enforcement mechanism. If I, if I understand the, if we reread the statute, I believe it's a code enforcement issue, not a, not a police enforcement issue.
Well, it, it actually, it depends how your ordinance is going to be set up because you could do it through 160 or you could do it through chap, chapter 11. So we, we can dictate that through our own ordinance.
Well, we don't want to do code enforcement because we're not going to have code people, you know, out on the beach. But we will have, we will have officers on the beach.
They'll be at the vacation rentals.
Say it again?
They'll be at the vacation rentals.
Yeah.
So we could definitely, you know, work on, we can definitely work on an ord, on an ordinance and we'll work with that.
But they, they also said that there'll be designated areas to smoke from what I read.
If we choose to do that. If we choose to do that.
But that may help.
Do we want to have a designated, I mean, are people going to abide by that?
I think, I'm not a cigarette smoker, but I think that a, a lot of them, they're always looking for a place to go smoke a cigarette. If not, they're going to violate something.
Does anyone have any thoughts on this? How, how do we, how are we, how are we directing the city attorney's office to come up with an ordinance? What, what, what kind of parameters do we want to include? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think as stringent as possible is my view.
I agree.
With, with this and, and as strong a, uh, uh, enforcement mechanism as possible. And if you want our feedback, feel free to draft options and come to us, but.
Right, we'll, we'll start putting options together and see what the line allows us to do. We, I'm sure the, to the extent we go on the civil penalty side, I'm sure those are limited by chapter 162. So that'll be similar to code enforcement type thing.
So, so let me ask you a question, just for, I want to understand this. So if right now the governors.
The governor signed it, uh, signed a bill saying that they're.
And, and they say we did nothing. How does his, how does his, his bill apply for our B.
What the bill does is it allows us to restrict if we want.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's, it's.
It's not self-executing.
Right, it doesn't, it's self-restricted, it says allows cities to go ahead and pass ordinances to restrict.
And that's why I ask, I know, because we have other ordinances similar to this. Uh, this is how we get in trouble with vacation rentals and some of the other things that we can't control. They're, you know, they're given.
Well, we can't restrict cigars.
Right, so I mean, I smoked my cigar and then I.
Camel's still made.
And then I puffed my.
Still made without filters?
Oh, no, that's over. But I mean, I could puff the cigar, sneak the cigarette, throw the butt.
There are no cigar butts.
No, but I could sneak my cigarette and hide it with the. I think the ordinance is necessary, I think it is.
Think we should do it.
I just don't know how we.
What do we want to tell the city attorney, what the ordinance would look like?
He should be telling us how to draft it.
Well, we'll, we'll go ahead and take a stab at it and then.
Take a stab at it, maybe see what other cities are doing.
Yeah, beach and parks also, we can do our public places, our public parks and our public beaches.
Cover it all Alan, make it happen.
People will tell on each other.
Thank you.
People will self-enforce.
Amazing city attorney.
Is there anything else Commissioner?
Me?
Uh, that's it, good.
That's it, okay.
Hungry.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any report?
I'm good sir.
Okay, Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you Mayor. Um, really quickly, uh, Solid Waste Working Group is still working forward. Uh, I want to congratulate Venice Magazine on their eighth anniversary. Mayor, uh, we were together on Tuesday, June 14th for the La Solas Isles undergrounding for those nine streets. Uh, 12 years in the making, so thank you staff, uh, and, uh, everyone else involved. That was great to actually see the beginning of that project. Look forward to it for the rest of the neighborhoods, um, that are in the queue. Tended a few International Swimming Hall of Fame board meetings, Flag River Civic Association, Lakewood Ridge. Um, also wanted to mention, uh, congrats to the graduates this Friday evening, fire rescue cadet graduation. Um, also this Friday, happy birthday Vice Mayor Saracen.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Birthday Vice Mayor.
Be 44.
I hate you, that's okay, but thank you very much.
Forty-four years young, yes, yes.
Years, wow, that's really awful.
Yeah, a lot of gray hair coming in.
You have to be 45 to go to Congress though.
Do you, okay. Heck on that.
Oh no.
That's just awful, 44, okay, thank you. Um, also South Middle River Civic Association coming up this week on the 30th, uh, very excited. Um, if you remember, I brought forward an idea a couple of years ago and actually we're going to have the first four unveiled this Thurs, um, next Thursday, the 30th. Uh, the four lifeguard towers are being wrapped. Um, I saw the other day the work going on, it's very exciting, but we'll have an unveiling. That will be hopefully the beginning of our beach gallery, hoping that we'll be able to, uh, do some more along the way. Uh, probably should have talked about it in the budget, uh, Chris, but we didn't. But maybe if we can figure out what, I know the Central Beach Alliance is looking to sponsor, uh, some along the way. But we really need to continue that because I think if we had the entire beach lined with artists' work on each of those lifeguard towers, that would really be, uh, a point of discussion, a big tourist attraction and I think people will really love it. So I'm looking forward to the first four, uh, and happy 4th of July to everybody, uh, coming up. Um, and I did want to mention a sad note, uh, for those of you that might remember. Uh, this was a former member of mine at Jackson Tower, uh, but John Amadeo, who was a restaurateur, so many restaurants, uh, in Fort Lauderdale, um, passed away last week, 63 years old. Uh, he actually collapsed in the building, uh, in the lobby of the building, uh, had a heart attack and, um, passed away right away. So that's, uh, very sad, 63 years old. Anyway, that's it from me Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thanks Mayor, just want to thank Fort Lauderdale PD and everyone who participated in the Pride, uh, festival and, and parade. Um, thought it went real well and just good collaboration and celebration. Um, uh, let's see, a couple of topics. One is the, um, landscape ordinance and, um, tree ordinance. I know y'all, good discussion and wanted to, one of the items, Chris, on that was, I know that's been a, um, kind of core discussion around this is a structural soil. And so just want to explore, is there a way we can maybe, um, lessen the kind of cost or requirement in residential to allow less structural soil, reduce the cost and then possibly bring that back for, you know, commission consideration with an improved adjustment is kind of a, or Anthony?
What affects residents?
Vice Mayor, I just wanted to make a clarification. I think when you and I had spoke on the phone, it wasn't structural soil that was the issue. I thought it was the suspended paving system.
Suspended pavement, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same thing because they do different things.
So Alan, I don't, or Chris, kind of possibility of bringing this?
Well, procedurally, we will have to touch base with the consultant and with Dr. Gassman and, and sort of work the changes. Um, if it was just coming back as is, we'd come back to a first reading and then a second reading again, since it failed on second reading. Um, but if the changes are substantive enough, we have to look into whether it might have to go back to P and Z or not. So we'd have to determine that. So I'm still not sure on whether we'd have to go back to P and Z. It's doable, it's just the process might involve it, just a.
Okay. Um, okay, so what, uh, so what, you'll work on, look at that or?
Well, I, I guess Anthony's group would first have to come up with some sort of, between the consultants and the internal folks that have been dealing with this for a couple of years now, how they can structure that or change that if it's feasible without, and how much it impacts the rest of the ordinance, because it's a very long ordinance.
So I, I think based on the conversations that you and I've had and the conversation we've had with others that were involved in this, I got a good sense of what the question is and so to Alan's point, the city attorney's point, sorry. Um, I could sit down with staff and we could take a look at what those changes would be and what that really does. Give it, that information to the city attorney's office and see where we go from there.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, possible. Okay, great, thanks Mayor, that's one. Second, and I might have brought this up a long time ago, but the idea Mayor of, um, a, like a, several other cities have this, like a youth advisory committee or council where you have young people, you know, like one of our, um, you know, kind of boards, they meet once a month and talk about what are city things that are going on. They learn about the city, um, they're engaged in kind of understanding and possibly offering suggestions to the commission of, hey, what could we do to better support our young people in the city and so forth? So just want to see if there's a interest on the commission, just to maybe have staff kind of look at that and possibly look at, um, you know, some, some ideas around that.
So like an advisory board of young people?
Yeah, like an advisory board of young people.
Florida League of Cities also has a model that we can follow and other cities have adopted it. I know Hollywood does a really great job.
Oh dude, Hollywood has one, okay.
Yeah, and, I mean, someone has to kind of.
If other cities are doing it, that's probably something we should look at because the city attorney and I have talked about the minimum qualifications that we have in our code as it relates to what a board or committee member can be and there is a minimum age requirement. So my guess is that these youth would be younger than that age requirement. So we'd have to figure out how we could structure.
Might have to amend our, or right, we, we may have to amend what's exist, what's already in place in regards to accommodate the ability for us to create, uh, especially if, if they're not advising the commission in any way, shape or form, then I, it's not as big an issue, but if they come into any sort of role where they would be presenting or advising you in any regard, uh, then we'd have to follow our general board ordinance, which we'll have to take a look at.
What would the minimum age be?
Well, it doesn't preclude a commissioner from convening their own youth group in an informal way.
Sure.
Um, because one of the problems with youth groups is a lot of the youths don't live here. They go to college or some, or, you know, so they're not here on a regular basis. So, and the ones that are here, um, you know, I'm just wondering how much participation you would get, but, you know, but like I said, nothing precludes you from convening your own, you know, youth group, um, within your own district. To do it as a formal board or committee, yeah, it was, it is going to have to change some of the, the rules we have regarding, um, residency, regarding, uh, age minimum. So I, I don't know, you want to come, why don't we look into that and see?
Yeah, let's look at it, it could, it could still be Fort Lauderdale residents, you know, high school age or something.
And I don't know if it's an official board position as much as just a youth advisory council or something like that, where we don't have to change our ordinance over it, we just get the kids organized and exposed. And I know, um, Tracy, the commissioner down in Hollywood, she would bring them up for, you know, something in Tallahassee also.
I think we should set a maximum age of like 44.
Right, 44, cut it off right there.
Forty-four, I don't know what the minimum would be, but what do you think? Yeah, good.
It's appropriate.
It's over.
Okay, huh?
It's fair. Really start losing your youthful shine at that point.
Thank you.
Drops up, okay, is that good Alan to kind of?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and give you some options.
Girls' association. Right. Right, aged out.
Yes, aged out.
Sorry, is that good Alan?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the, our existing ordinance, see if there's any, uh, we'll give you some options.
Thank you and Mayor, I think that's it, that's it, thank you.
All set?
That's all I got Mayor, thanks.
So, um, a few things, um, this way has been Pride Month, it continues to be in Fort Lauderdale. I attended a number of events, uh, the Flotarama, which was an interesting, uh, event of 28 boats that started downtown and went all the way up to, uh, District 1 at the Marriott, the, uh, what's, uh, Marriott Residence Inn?
Yeah, the Marriott Resi, the old Illagano.
The old Illaganos, uh, followed by a nice party, was attended by hundreds and hundreds of folks. It was really a fun event. Uh, we also had a, a delegation from our sister cities, uh, San Sebastiano, uh, Brazil, a delegation of the paramedics. I did the greeting, there were quite a few people there. Uh, thank you Greg for helping to translate some of, some of the messaging back and forth. Greg speaks, uh, uh, Portuguese, so that was very handy. Um, I don't know what he told them, but I hope they, they were all smiling.
They were smiling.
Obrigado.
Yeah.
I, I think you owe the organizers of this event, um, a large check because every time I turned the news on, I saw the Trentalis Law Office, uh, in the center of everything. So I don't know how that happened. I'm just saying.
There was a check presented, uh, um, and, uh, moving on, uh, and, and I, and I did, and I, and I think hopefully next year, maybe I can, uh, maybe make a, pay a visit to our sister cities in Brazil. We have two of them, um, now that we're traveling again, it might be, uh, an opportunity to, uh, connect, reconnect with them. I also attended the La Solas Isles, uh, neighborhood ground, underground, uh, underground groundbreaking, uh, for the, uh, for the utilities and it's a long time coming. And, uh, uh, I know the, I know Seven Isles is looking to, uh, be the next neighborhood and I think, uh, Riviera Isles and Idlewild, I think are still eager to get theirs done. Well, this past Saturday, attended the Stonewall Pride Parade and Festival. It was a great event, I don't know how many people were there, they said anywhere between 20 and 40,000, but I don't know what the number was, but it was certainly a fun-filled event.
I thought they said it was like the largest crowd ever.
It was the largest crowd ever. It was really, really amazing.
After the Trump inauguration.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, would you stop and.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Get official count next year.
So, uh, so one of the dividends that we are beginning to realize, uh, from our trip to Dubai is the, uh, the, the, the UA Minister of State for Trade is actually coming here to our city on Thursday. And you're all welcome to participate in a reception from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Tower Club. This will be a panel discussion in which I'll be participating as well as the mayor of the county. And, uh, we'll continue to discuss opportunities for investment and trade between our two, uh, our two municipalities. And, um, that's this Thursday, the 23rd. Uh, also on the 23rd that morning, I'll be doing welcoming remarks for Faith in Florida Interfaith Confer, Conference, which is being held at the Urban League. Uh, again, that's at 9:30 that morning. Uh, the Canada Florida Chamber of Commerce is meeting at 5:00 PM at the Riverside Hotel that same day. It's going to be a busy day, um, everyone's welcome to attend that. And most importantly, which, uh, Commissioner Glassman failed to announce, that in announcing his happy 4th of July celebration, he forgot to tell you that we're having the B-52s.
I left that for you Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So the B-52s will be performing on Fort Lauderdale Beach on July 4th that evening. Last year we had the Beach Boys and we're now going to have B-52s. It's going to be a great event, it's a free event for everybody, not just folks that live in Fort Lauderdale, but everyone who loves Fort Lauderdale, please come to the beach that day. It's going to be a magnificent day for everybody to celebrate the independence of our country. Couple things, uh, couple of issues, one second. Alan, uh, I've talked about this before with you, I wonder if you could give the commission some, uh, some, uh, indication as to where we're going to go with our panhandling ordinance now that, uh, tell us where we are with that.
Right, so the two ordinances we have on the books, one of them we, we do have to repeal, there's, there's no salvaging it. The other one, we're working with outside counsel, because again, we're still in active litigation, so we're going to amend it. Part of the challenge is we need to update the data that supports it. So we're, we're looking to sources from FDOT and, and I think University of Florida has some good data with regards to particular intersections, because we have to have data that supports the, uh, the, the, the public safety aspect of, of our canvas, road canvassing, uh, ordinance. And that'll be changed to apply to everyone, it won't be just the panhandlers, but anybody in the roadway, in the, in the median, trying to do any sort of canvassing, selling or, or any sort of, uh, uh, you know, even politicians saying hello, vote for me, can't do that. hello, vote for me, can't do that. So we're gonna, we're gonna change all that. So we're in the process of doing it because we're in a litigation posture, we've experienced this with community court. The minute we have anybody that's even remotely close of being charged with anything close to panhandling, we get challenged on. So, we want to make sure we write it correctly, and we will have to do it.
So when can we, when can we see something? Because we get so many complaints, I mean...
It'll be after the break, and it'll have limited effect. I mean, obviously, it would help, it will help in the major intersections that we can identify as problematic, based on the data. And obviously, it'll come down to enforcement. So it'll be after the break that we can, because it's got to go through two readings anyway. And then, of course, we're working on the legal side. As I stated, the Austin decision came out from the US Supreme Court. We're working that with the court to try to amend the preliminary injunction that's already in place, and then obviously, advance the case a little bit more favorably to us because the Supreme Court's receded from Reed versus Donna Gilbert, which has been the problematic case since 2014. So we are working on it, we just want to do it correctly. So it'll be sometime after the break.
All right, okay, great. Okay, and the last thing I want to bring up is, you may be aware that the county commission has been having discussions with regard to the river crossing in connection with the, with the commuter rail service. And this, this commission has, is on record as supporting a tunnel approach as opposed to a bridge. And there seems to be some differences of opinion on the county commission as to the next steps going forward. I don't think that there's a majority in support of a tunnel, and, but I think that it would be important for the county to be aware of how the community, the people, feel about the bridge versus the tunnel. And I'm going to ask this commission, it'd be my recommendation, but I'd like to see what the rest of you feel, about whether or not to put a straw poll out there in November, since we already have special elections, to add a straw poll on the, on that ballot, asking the people of this community whether or not they would prefer a tunnel versus a bridge as we cross the new river. My sense of the community has been consistently, most people prefer the tunnel, but if we could have something on record showing that the people do support a tunnel, it might encourage the county to agree with this commission, that the tunnel is the best approach in trying to deal with the new river crossing. Does anyone have any feelings about that? I'm not sure what the cost would be, but it would be minimal, considering we already have a ballot to fill the three positions that are vacating this November. We'll start with Commissioner Maritas, do you have any feelings on whether the other...
I think it's, I think it's fine. I think the wording may be a challenge, because I would say, if I was voting on something, do I like a bridge or the tunnel, if I didn't have to pay for either one, or the price was the same, then that's not, I would answer one way, but, I mean, obviously, I think we know that everyone prefers the...
So why don't I come back at the next meeting?
I think it makes sense, but, yeah.
Okay, why don't I come back at the next meeting with a couple of options that we can choose from, as far as wording, and then we can vote on them, if that makes sense?
Just a question, because you said it's a straw poll, but will that make a difference to the county commission?
Well, I think it, it may not make, I don't know. I would hope it would. I mean, if the, if the community wants something, you would think that the county commission, who is, who are elected representatives, would listen to the people. But, but it would certainly help the MPO and, and the US Department of Transportation to know that the community's in favor of one versus the other. I've already been in discussions with the US Department of Transportation, they have absolutely no interest in a bridge whatsoever, but that doesn't seem to make a difference to the county commissioners.
What's the, the US Department of Transportation is with us, huh, on a tunnel? What are they, what are they saying? I just...
Well, they, you know, the Biden administration...
Yeah.
The Biden administration, you know, has an agenda, and part of their infrastructure agenda is to, is to rebuild the infrastructure of America through rebuilding roads and bridges, and in this case, a tunnel, and to connect communities. They think that bridges divide communities, and they are very, very pointed in that discussion. And in fact, they're spending money taking down bridges in areas and rebuilding transportation networks that help connect, that help connect communities. In this particular case, you know, we have reached out to a number of different consultants, and I'll tell you this, they've reached out to us, and we've gotten the price of the tunnel. The original price that the FDOT came to us was, was three-point-eight billion dollars, which we all choked on. We now have spoken with credible consultants who have brought it under one billion, we're at seven-hundred to nine-hundred million dollars complete, yes, for a, for a tunnel that would go from below Davie Boulevard to north of Sunrise. So, and, and those consultants have met with the county commission.
Have they told the county commission?
Yes, they have.
The updated price tag of this? And what is, what is the county commission saying?
Well, um, one county, you know, you'd hear with some county commissioners, they want to know the price.
Right.
Because they somehow feel that they're going to be stuck with part of the bill, as they should be. I mean, part of the, part of the one-cent transportation tax was for transportation.
Hello.
And, and they intend to collect over twenty billion dollars over thirty years.
In which, we got clarity that those dollars could be used for the tunnel.
Yes.
We, they were here indicating that to us.
Yes, and twenty-five to thirty percent of that tax money, guess where it comes from?
Hello. So what's the problem with that?
Right.
So we're looking at just a fraction of the money to be spent on a need that we have all agreed is a need for our city, especially since we've, we, I personally believe, and I think this commission believes, that, you know, mass transit through rail is an important step forward in trying to eliminate traffic on, on the hurry, on the, on the highway arteries. And, and I think it's important that we, you know, work together with the federal government and with, and with other municipalities to try to improve transportation. And I think rail, rail service is going to be, you know, one component in that. But we certainly do not want to build a bridge through the middle of our downtown.
Correct.
Absolute disaster. And for some reason, the county commission, you know, especially those that live in Cooper City and Parkland, you know, aren't going to be affected by a bridge.
Right, yeah.
Right? So they don't really have, they don't have the same feeling of understanding how even a, a project like this, which is of regional significance, should, should be considered, you know, a tunnel should be considered for this because of pricing. Now, we've, we've done a lot of research, I commend the staff that has worked with me to reach out and to find our resources, to have brought that price down significantly. In the meantime, we've discovered that the price of bridges has gone up significantly.
What's the mid-level bridge? Do you know the cost right now, or the mid-one, or the high one, comparison to the tunnel? Do you know what those costs were? I don't remember.
The cost of the, of the eighty-foot one is the same price as the tunnel.
Okay.
So, and, and there's a lot of variables in there, there's the land takings and things like that, but, you know, the formula that FDOT uses for land takings is that if, if they need to go on a bridge, if they need to go over a parcel of land, they're talking about just taking like a half of that parcel, even though it may be a half, half a house, or it may be, you know, someone's front yard. Well, if you're going to take someone's front yard, you're going to take the whole parcel, but they don't factor that into their cost. So it's a lot of gimmickry that's going on with them. So my feeling is that it's not, it's not a binding resolution, but if we could do a straw poll to get a sense of the community as to what the community feels, I just think it would be helpful to...
But Mayor, how would that help with, they, they're saying they're going to come up with their LPA in August, so how would going on a ballot in November help if they're making their decision in August?
Because the, the county doesn't have the final say, they just have, they're just one, they're just one party in the decision-making. The MPO is going to participate, plus US, the US Department of Transportation is going to be involved. But, yes, they said they're going to make their decision in August, but they also said they're going to make their decision in April, and they're going to make their decision in May.
Don't be worried.
Well, and it also, if, just hypothetically, if we, if it's on the ballot, they might say to them, the county might say to themselves wisely, let's wait until we see what feedback the, the city gets before we make a decision on our LPA. That's possible.
Well, that's possible, so, you know, might delay it till November.
Right, till we get, and are we, are you able to put on a ballot, Alan, something like that, that doesn't, I mean, just to...
We, we looked into it, because that was one of the questions we had, because usually, if you put a question on a, on a ballot, you need to, depending on what the result is, you're going to act on it if it's positive.
Right.
But here, you, you can do that, the charter allows you to do that.
Huh.
And then it comes down to consent of the supervisor of election, which I think, you know, the initial discussions where they were on board, costs is, depending on the lane, I mean, we were limited to seventy or seventy-five words, so it depends on whether, you know, a second page needs to be added, that type of thing. It's doable, I mean, time, time is, is crucial, because we're getting close to those deadlines. Obviously, they have a primary, the supervisor of election has a primary in August, so they're not going to finalize their ballots for November until after that time, but we still need to get working on it very quickly if we're going to do it.
Yeah, I think it's interesting.
Let's think about it.
Chris, have you had conversations with the new county administrator about this issue?
I've had discussions generally about the river crossing, yes, but not a, not a very specific conversation with Monica, no.
Is it worth getting aggressive and having those conversations with her?
Well, I mean, she's just a, she's, she doesn't make the decisions.
Wow.
I mean, I mean, Monica, you know, she's just going to take the direction of her commission.
I think the mayor's right on that, but I'm happy to facilitate a discussion, if you'd like, with, with Monica, she's been texting me while we've been in this meeting, so...
Okay, and then maybe we can all talk to, you know, our county commissioners, or...
Well, our county commissioner has been supportive.
Yes.
Yeah. At least one of them has been. I mean, we have more than one county commissioner. The other one has not been supportive, so, for whatever reason, they've never discussed it with us, they just have not been supportive.
Maybe Vice Mayor can talk to that other county commissioner.
Perhaps.
Happy to talk to the county commissioners.
Okay, that's it for me. Anything else?
OPEB.
City manager, you have any report?
So I will have a report after...
Oh, right, trash, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, there's been, there's still complaints about inconsistent trash pickup. My neighborhood is finally, we're okay, even though there were a couple of months where my own trash wasn't picked up, you know, when it was supposed to be. And I now understand that our hauler wants to terminate their contract at the end of the, at the end of the term.
At the end of the term, they've indicated their intent not to renew. That's not until next year, so it's not, it's right around the corner. We have time to go back to the competitive market and rebid, but I, your comments are consistent with what we're hearing as well. I think, I look to, where am I looking towards? Alan Dodd, do you have anything you'd like to add, or do you want to check in with Melissa and get back to the commission? I think that's, those comments are consistent with what we're still hearing, unfortunately.
Is it, is it personnel problems, are they not finding, do they not have enough people to, to run the, the operation? What's going on?
It, it, Mayor, it's a combination of personnel, vehicle maintenance issues, and just their overall capacity to run the routes. Melissa's been putting a lot of pressure on them, but they are failing to complete all the routes each week, either due to mechanical issues or, or lack of people.
It's getting worse.
This is a huge corporation.
And my thing is, Alan, is we have conditioned our folks to put their trash out on certain days. When it's not picked up, and it sits for two or three more days...
Sits out there.
It's, it's an issue, because we want the cans, according to orders, are supposed to be back in by nightfall, or you're subject to a fine. But cans are being left out, you know, three, four, or five days now. In some cases, they don't get picked up at all until the next, the next cycle. So I, I don't know how we, we know that they're done with us, but how do we provide services in the meantime? I mean, that's the question I think is on the floor.
Yeah.
It's not just my neighborhood, it's, I get them, I get it from the whole city.
Yes, Commissioner, and, and we are imposing liquidated damages against them, we're using every tool in the contract to try and force them to at least provide the services that they're obligated to do. The solicitation to go out and get a, a new provider is almost ready, and, and we anticipate within the next month that will go out on the street, and we'll see what type of competition we can get with other companies that may be more interested in providing quality services.
I guess that's the best we can do right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So who, who, because they call me, they call us.
They call me? Well, I, I experienced it myself.
How are we communicating to, to...
I call him.
How are we communicating to them to call somebody else other than, I mean, because I, I know when they don't pick it up, because mine's not picked up.
Commissioner, the, the...
I can't call anybody.
The eight-two-eight-eight-thousand number is the call center, and when it gets there, it immediately gets forward to Melissa and her, her folks who talk directly with the, the company to try and address the issues. And, and that happens every day where she gets many, many calls about where they haven't picked up, or they didn't pick it up in the right way, and there's issues with knocked-over containers or, or other concerns.
So maybe we just need to send some communications out to let them know they're going to be frustrated until the contract is renewed. Because right now, they have an expectation of their garbage being picked up.
Well, what is, what's our recourse?
We can work with the communication, come up with something to inform residents of what we're doing. And I think we provided a memo a few months ago, we can provide an update to, to you, which can be shared as well.
It sounds as though we've, we've utilized the tools we have in the contract in the circumstance which is the liquidated damages. I mean, we hit them in the pocketbook, right? That's, that's really the recourse that we have.
That's great for us, but what, I think what we're seeing is...
Right, you want the trash picked up. No, I get it.
You're going to be inconvenienced until we get this contract renewed. That's, that's the bottom line, because there's no recourse on the surface.
No.
Okay.
But they have an expectation, every time Tuesday comes, or Wednesday, or Friday, that their garbage is going to be picked up, so they prepare for that day. And they put that can out, and they go to work, and they come back and that can's still sitting there. And then no one says anything, because no one knows that the can has not been picked up. Then they call the mayor, they call the others up here about a can that was anticipated being picked up that day. My question is, how do we communicate to them that this is not going to be the case anymore?
I don't know the answer to that, but I'll, let me, let me assemble a group to talk about what the best...
I think we send other communications out, and we, and our residents are pretty good at understanding once they get, you know, the notification. I can tell them each and every time, but every Tuesday, they have an expectation.
Okay.
But if they don't pick it up, we come after them. If they don't take their garbage cans in, we come after them.
Well, let's continue to do our best to try to encourage them to do a better job, I guess.
I'd say the communication is the only, only other added tool to add to the tool, tool belt, that's what I think. Because it's not going to get better, I don't think so.
I, I, I agree, Commissioner.
Okay.
Do you have any reports?
I don't have any reports for this meeting. We do have an OPEB meeting, and I am going to have a, a need for a, a meeting that's a non-public meeting related to negotiations with the IFF, so I am going to need a couple of minutes in response to the meeting of last, two weeks ago. So if we could do OPEB and then clear the room, and...
Why don't we do that at the end of tonight's meeting? Because we're already at ten minutes to six, and we got to take our break. So, it looks like a shorter meeting tonight, so we can do it after that.
Okay.
All right. There's no, there's no CRA meeting?
No.